Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. This is the Salinas City Council meeting. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. City Clerk?
Buenas tardes. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotonda.
Thank you. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Barrera, would you lead us?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sounds super impressive with a full house. My goodness, thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and do roll call.
Councilmember Barrera?
Here.
Councilmember González?
Present.
Councilmember McShane?
Here.
Councilmember Osornio?
Here.
Councilmember Rocha?
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Here.
Mayor Craig?
Here. Excellent, thank you. I do want to point out on the consent agenda, item 24-239, which is the Kismet security contract, has been pulled. That's the one from Montevilla, so until further notice on that. Additionally, I know that we have a full house, and I suspect it's over a couple of different issues. The District 3 vacancy discussion will begin at 7:30 p.m. tonight. So I wanted to make everyone aware, so that if you are here to speak on that item, it starts at 7:30 p.m. We will take public comment at 7:30 p.m. sharp on that. We will stop the business of the day and go to that item promptly at 7:30. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open, excuse me, we have a proclamation. I think I gave it to Councilmember McShane for Small Business Week, April 28th through May 4th of 2024.
You did, Mayor. Thank you very much. Truly a great time of year. It's Small Business Week, April 28th through May 4th, 2024. Whereas small businesses are the engines of job and revenue creation in the United States, and this fact comes to life here in the city of Salinas. And whereas the city of Salinas recognizes that small businesses are a core component of our local economy, they provide essential services, pay taxes, and contribute to the local charitable and community efforts. And whereas small businesses provide jobs, generate revenue, and bring unique cultural and social elements into our community. And whereas the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs throughout the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas the city of Salinas encourages its residents to patronize local businesses through Small Business Week and throughout the year, and join in this national effort to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the American economy and their importance to ensuring that our local communities remain as vibrant as today as tomorrow. So therefore, Mayor Kimbley-Craig and the Salinas City Council proclaim April 28th through May 4th, 2024, as Small Business Week and encourage all residents to recognize small businesses for their contributions that they make to the community.
Excellent. And I believe we have Crystal Casillas here, who is our business navigator for the city?
Or Houston, right?
Oh, or you're not Crystal.
I'm not Crystal.
You're Houston. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I am Houston Pullen. I'm the Senior Economic Development Manager for the city of Salinas. For those of you I haven't met, it's very nice to meet you. And thank you so much for the proclamation for Small Business Week and for all that you're doing for small businesses in the city of Salinas. We give you a round of applause for everything that you're doing. So thank you very much. To receive the proclamation, I have, we actually have representatives from MCBC and I think Suba as well, as well, hello? I would like to invite them up. And we have a number of events that are happening this upcoming week, and we'll have MCBC start us off with what you guys have going on. So thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. I apologize in advance. I'm finding a cold that's been sticking around since the weekend, and apologies to my voice a little bit raspy. Thank you again. My name is Jesus Gutia. I am the Program Manager for the Building Business Back Program, or BBB. What BBB aims to do is help businesses throughout Monterey County recover from the effects of the pandemic. One of the ways that we do this is by having our website as a resource hub for businesses, where they can find grants, loans, tax credits, workshops, and among other things. We have a special emphasis for those businesses that are women-owned, minority-owned, LGBTQ+ owned, as well as those operating in corporate areas of the county. All of our services are completely free, as well as bilingual, so Spanish as well as English. I wanted to talk about a little bit, two workshops that we've put on and will put on. One was the NICO workshop, where we invited Salinas staff, Crystal Casillas, as well as the County of Monterey staff, to talk on the permit, allowing small businesses to flourish within Monterey County. I also wanted to invite you all for the License to Build workshop that we're hosting tomorrow. We're inviting CCBA, or the Central Coast Builders Association, to give a presentation on how individuals who are interested to becoming general contractors can become one, or those who are working under a general contractor label can get licensed and become an actual general contractor. Thank you.
And then when our representatives from Suba?
Thank you so much for this proclamation for small businesses. This is Lupe Coarrubias Martinez. She is one of our board members. We also have several businesses here from the Alisal, from Suba, that are here. If you guys, if you can parar todos los negocios aqui que están aquí con nosotros? So we just want to recognize our small businesses because they are the, really a jewel here in our community, and really are the impetus and the movers and shakers of our community in many ways, because ultimately, that's, that's the tax base for our community. So we want to thank you for this proclamation, and we want to thank you for recognizing small business this upcoming week. Next week, we will be having a workshop. We'll send it out to folks, put it out on our social media. We just had one last week on insurance needs for small businesses. We had a number of folks that showed up to that. Next week, our workshop will be specifically on retirement plans for small businesses. So as MCBC and BBB does the workshops, we try to make certain that we're not doing the similar workshops that they're doing. We're trying to make sure that we're putting out workshops that are really relevant to our small businesses and really are working on some of those issues that pertain to our small businesses. So thank you so much for having us here today.
Thank you. All right, now if I can have everyone gather forward, we're going to take a quick photo. And if I could have council come and take a photo for Small Business Week?
Any of our small businesses?
Of course, yeah.
The multiple of your small businesses?
It's my understanding we have Chamber of Commerce too, so come on up. Okay, we are going to go ahead and move on to public comment. Just a show of hands, who plans to speak tonight for public comment? Okay, and for, okay, thank you, I got a rough idea. And just as a reminder, we will not be discussing the District 3 vacancy right now. We will be doing that at 7:30 p.m. So these are items that are not on today's agenda. And I'm going to go ahead and set, just because I have to stay consistent through the whole meeting, we're going to do a minute and a half. So with that, welcome.
Well, good afternoon. Jose Yara, resident of Montevilla, again. I want to thank, first of all, Traffic Commune for getting our stop signs put up. I appreciate it. I do want to thank Mr. Callahan, giving me a call back. You know, I don't get a lot of callbacks when I do get ahold of people, but he did. Thank you, sir. And then I want to go back to the same thing we always talked about, about the park. We're having issues with the park again. They're not cleaning up, they're drinking beer, they're leaving beer bottles. I know Mr. Pia says he's going to send somebody out there, parking enforcement. Lorenzo's going to send somebody, it never happens. Thank God, Mr. Murray's here. He's the only guy that sends people out there to do anything. They do their job 100%. God bless the police force in Salinas. And again, I'm going to talk about the H2A building that they have for Ben Guard. Again, you know, I hate to say, but you know, Mr. Barrera, you and Mr. Alejo did not diligently do your job and inform us correctly of the meetings, and they got their way. You know, they're going to have the main entrance on Alisal, they're going to take the second entrance on Skornberg, which we didn't want. They're going to just flood us with traffic, traffic and people, and people walking through there all day long. Then, and then they're going to keep the one by the park open too. That's going to be the third, the third entrance and exit, which is, I'm just sorry, it just, you know, I expected more out of you guys. I, I'm sorry, I'm just not really happy with you guys, between the city and the county. You guys really need to inform the people correctly, and you're not doing it, and that's, that's not right. But thank you anyways. You guys have a great day.
Hey. My name is Brad Palmer. I am the owner of a small business, and this has not been our week. I own the business Candy Cruz here in the city of Salinas with my brother Grant. It's a family-owned business. Unfortunately, I'm here today to reiterate our request for Councilmember Steve McShane to recuse himself, not only from our city council meeting, but the closed session you were about to have about our project. The people of the city of Salinas are tired of these backdoor politics that lead to dysfunction and end up hurting local businesses. We are here to formally request these tactics cease immediately and end this era of business as usual for these bad actors. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, welcome.
En español?
Sí.
Y unos momentos para traducir. Gracias.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Teresa Merino. Vivo en el Distrito 4. Hoy vengo a entregar 250 firmas por CCA. Seguimos en la lucha, y cada martes nos verán aquí entregando firmas para el control de rentas. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Merino, and I'm from District 4. And I'm here to deliver 250 signatures from CCA. You're going to see us, see us here every Tuesday. We're going to continue with this, giving you all these signatures for rent control. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Romero, y estoy sola aquí para recordarles que seguimos pidiendo un control de rentas, para que sigan pensando y apoyándonos en esta propuesta. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is María Romero, and I'm here to ask you to continue thinking about rent control and continue supporting us with this proposal.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, council and residents of this city that we love. I'm just here to offer prayer. I wanted to be first in line. Lord, I just thank you for the energy and everyone that loves this city. And I just ask for your peace right now in decisions that are made that affect so many. And I just want to release your peace, your shalom over this city, over this council meeting, and your love that binds us together. Jesus' name, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask that we refrain from clapping. I want everyone to feel empowered to speak, and clapping and cheering and jeering and throwing tomatoes is not helpful. So I just want to make sure that we stay on a professional path. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bradley Clinton. I've lived here my entire life, and I've never seen the conditions of roads in Salinas to where they're at now. I understand you don't have the money for it, but use the money wisely that you have. I don't mind having snail trails like West Market Street, on every street in Salinas, that that's all you can afford, but at least you're stopping the problem. Well, if you go down Market Street on the ramp, on Front Street backing up the tracks, that road's going to have to be redone completely pretty soon, because the heavy trucks is pushing and breaking up the sidewalk. And the same thing in front of the two, the two schools, Palma and, and the middle school. The same thing's happening, because all those big buses are ruining that street. And on top of that, another issue I have is over here on Church Street. You guys, you guys put the, the new parking in there, but you made it all day. So those parking spaces are taken by 8 o'clock by the workers. That should be two-hour parking, like it was before, and everything around it is two-hour parking. So that needs to be changed. It's not fair for somebody coming into the city and having to, to park miles away just because the city, which has its own parking spaces, lots, are using public parking. And then also over here, in front of the school, the city hall, people parked the wrong way, and I don't know if this, if they fixed it yet, but it's not in the, the code book for parking the wrong way. And they've had enough time to learn not to do that. It's unsafe coming out anyway. So that needs to be something that maybe Mr. Murray could check into, if that's in the, in the bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Anyways, I can't be here for the later comments, so I figured I'd give this comment. Something's been on my mind since you guys, the council, removed the mayor from the seat of the water, you know, appointee. But anyways, to me, when I looked at that, I felt that, I'm sure there was a violation in there, you know, of, you know, you guys meeting behind her back, because when you guys came into this meeting, your mind was made up, you were going to drop her, and you did. So, you know, that, that didn't look good on you guys as a council. And now, the other thing is, I know a lot of you guys are considering McShane resigning a victory, but to me, it's not a victory.
So I'm going to ask that you stay on topic. The, the appointment and whatnot comes at 7:30?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
So anyways, back to the comments, is if things keep going the way they are, our city of Salinas is going to suffer a great deal. And I know we got a slogan out there, you know, loving Salinas. But if things keep going the way they are going, we are going to have to change that slogan, because, you know, it's not going to be loving Salinas, because everybody's going to be at each other's throats. And I don't think that's what we want. As a city, we want what's best for the city, not what's best for each other or for each individual. You know, we're always, you know, attacking each other, and that's not the way to do it. We need to work together, even if you disagree on certain things, we need to stay together. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon. I am John McPherson. I'm the Executive Director of the Alliance on Aging, and I'm here to update you on a very, very important project that we are currently leading. We received one of 16 agencies around the state to receive a grant to develop a local age and disability action plan. And so we have convened an advisory committee for that, and we now have commenced our public assessment process. We have phone calls going out to the public, which we will then supplement with written surveys. And then in the fall, our group will pull that information together and develop an action plan that we can then bring to you, our local leaders, on how we can make the entire Salinas Valley more friendly to our seniors and those with disabilities. So you'll be hearing from me again, but I wanted to give you this quick update. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Alejandro Chavez from the Salines United Business Association. I sent electronically just a letter just a little while ago, and I wanted to, on behalf of the Suba, I wanted to reach out to express our ongoing concerns with many of our members that are seeking to collaborate with the city of Salinas on managing the challenges posed by unpermitted public street food vendors here in the city of Salinas. Many of our members, our food truck members, our restaurants, are really having a difficult time with some of the vendors that are out there and having to compete with folks that are unpermitted, and really see that as a challenge, and really a place where it is diverting economic benefits away from our community and really stifling our tax base here in the city of Salinas. And so in response to that, we, we've come up with four different items that we think maybe the city could take on and take a look at, to see if there's a possibility of, of working with our, with Suba and also our, our businesses. One is enforcement support. Two, temporary moratorium. Three, regular stakeholder meetings. Four, a comprehensive policy development. And we are committed to fostering those discussions with the city of Salinas and our small business community to address these concerns. We're not opposed to entrepreneurship, but we seek to ensure that it operates within the regulatory framework of all other businesses that must adhere to it and be on equal footing. Thank you so much. The letter, I will pass out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. You can go ahead and hand it to the city clerk. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Marlissa Blueford. Coming on behalf of youth that I interact with on a regular basis, who attend public high schools, middle schools here in Salinas, and they are dealing with a lot of racial tension. And so there is going to be representation at the Salinas School District Meeting later today, but I wanted to make sure that the city of Salinas was aware of these issues that continue to go. And it's sad that even for people of color being fighting against each other, similar to what happened with Seaside High School. We try to, we want to make sure that the city of Salinas is working with the school districts to make sure that these problems are addressed, so that the students, we have even a third grader who does not want to go to school because she's tired of being called the N-word, tired of being called a monkey, and at third grade. So we just want to make sure that the city of Salinas is aware of it, and they're working with the school districts to address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Chávez. Les pido por favor, nos vuelvan a ayudar, ya que empezó otra vez la prostitución y tráfico en la calle Rosevel, Madera, Quer y Kin. Y seguimos, oímos pitidos, frenos, que a veces van a chocar, y estamos con temor de que algún carro choque y se meta algún apartamento o casa. Y si hablamos a la policía, al número de no emergencia, vemos que cuando llegan y están allí, las mujeres se esconden entre los carros. Algunas se, se meten en propiedades privadas y otras se van. Y las personas que las vienen a buscar, dejan de ir. Pero cuando el policía, el policía regresa, o cuando el policía se va, ellas regresan o vienen otras mujeres. Este, y lo que nos duele mucho son nuestros hijos, ya que ellos están sufriendo mucho más al ver, sentir y oír de esto que nos está pasando y que no termina. Me comentan por allí que antes estaba esto en la calle Rianda. No, no puede estar esto a ningún lado. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is María Chávez, and I'm here to ask for your help again. Prostitution is back, traffic is back. In Rosbeld, Curd, and Kim, we hear honking, we hear brakes, we're afraid that the cars are going to crash into the house. We called the police to the non-emergency number. They come over, but the women hide. They hide among the cars, between the cars, or on private property. And when the police leaves, they come out again. The people that are looking for these ladies also come when the police leave, and it's affecting us all. It affects our children because it hurts them, because they hear us all the time complaining and unhappy about the situation. And there's no end to this problem. They told us before that this happened in Rianda, but this is something that should not happen anyplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up with the residents' concerns around sex worker activity in Kern Street. She did remind me of Rianda Court, Rianda Street, right behind CVS, between Alisal Market. It brings questions as to what the process was in terms of how that activity of sex workers suddenly moved to Kern Street. I do have some recollection of how businesses were organizing in order to, to either move it, get, you know, have it out of sight. But it feels as if our residents here are trying to do the same, and they're, you know, we're, we're back at square one. So if there are any types of records that are there as to how it was addressed at Rianda Court, Rianda Street, maybe that's something that we can, or this council can take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
So yes, hi, my name is Mark, and I'm a housing, housing provider here in Salinas. And I'm here to say that I oppose the fee, city proposed rent stabilization ordinance that we've seen come out here in the last little bit. Anyway, I'm not that great at this, so I'd like to read something, notes that I've written down. I would like to see the city council provide studies and data to the citizens of this city on how your ordinance is going to improve the housing issue going forward in the next five to 10 years. I provided you with information there. That's a start. There's much more to come if you need it, but there's something for everybody to read as a start. But I think it's fair for, if you're asking, if you want to impose this on us, housing providers and everybody in the city of Salinas, it needs to be better for everybody, not just a few people. But anyway, there are many examples and studies done across our country and in the state that prove and show that rent control and rent stabilization actually hinders and makes the housing shortage worse and increases rents by no new supply. Please show us your plan on how this is going to work and where it has worked, and why you're bringing it to our city. There are state and local ordinances in place to protect tenants in need. In many cases, tenants' attorney's fees are covered through various tenant abbotcy groups. There are courts that will serve justice on any landlord who takes advantage of tenant, of tenants. Therefore, there is no need to appease tenant rights groups.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Audrey Wardwell. Just wanted to address the rent stabilization ordinance and ask that, it was just presented to us in March. You plan, the intention is to have it completed by June. I ask that you move forward at the same speed with increasing housing policies that can increase housing in our area, drafting ordinances to allow rezoning, tax incentives for investors. That needs to happen at the same rapid speed that you are moving forward with this rent stabilization ordinance to make it fair and balanced. In the meantime, I ask that you look to adopt the state rent control ordinance, or state rent control as a city ordinance, as we continue to explore this issue, to adopt what is best for our entire city, and especially our tenants here who are suffering with high rents. What is being proposed is not going to help anybody. So I would like the time to allow us to find other revenues which will create more long-term solutions than what is proposed here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello. My name's Marsha Peoples. I've been a resident here in Salinas almost 45 years. My twenties, I worked with Jim Mamie when I was a youngster, still a youngster. But I'm here today, I just want to say, is there any way we can address more attention to our roads? I've blown out two or three tires on my van, my husband had to come pick me up, and our roads are really bad. That was one thing. I just want to say also, I taught 12 years Hartnell College Preschool, and I am so saddened that in our schools, like Marlissa was saying, I've watched her grow up, that there's hardly any representation. My grandkids are coming up. My son was quarterback at Salinas High in the 1990s, great CCS team. But now there's hardly any administrators in our schools, on our boards, our city councils, there's no representation. And I'm almost embarrassed to bring people into my city on the Elm track now. It's so embarrassing when you come in on the Elm track, and I know it's not your fault. And I know it's not your fault, but can we do more things? Maybe put more of those rocks on the side. But when I bring guests into my city, I am so embarrassed because it's not the city I once knew when I came here 40-something years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es José Ortiz. Yo soy dueño de un pequeño negocio aquí en Salinas.
Uno momento para traducción.
Okay. Señor.
Gracias.
Buen señor, usted es su nombre?
José Ortiz.
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 Okay.
Okay, buenas tardes, mi nombre es José Ortiz. Soy dueño de un pequeño negocio aquí en la ciudad de Salinas. Estoy operando sobre de diez años y he estado, pues, pagando mis impuestos, he estado pagando los permisos de ciudad, de departamento de salud, y de los bomberos también, ¿verdad? Y ahorita tenemos una problemática de comerciantes que vienen de otras ciudades y nos están invadiendo todas las calles, nos están invadiendo, pues, pues las ganancias pocas que teníamos ahorita nos bajó a un 40%, un 50% de nuestras ganancias. Lo único que les pido que nos ayuden a que la ciudad haga su trabajo de enforzamiento de esas personas que no tienen sus permisos. Yo nomás les pido una sola cosa, dos cosas les voy a pedir aquí, que hagan su trabajo en enforzamiento y ya en junio vienen los nuevos permisos. Y necesito, o les pido de favor, que por qué no paran a dar más permisos cuando no somos educados todavía las personas aquí en la ciudad de Salinas, a los pequeños comerciantes, para que saquen sus permisos bien de salubridad, de las Salinas y de los bomberos que necesitamos aquí. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon, my name is José Ortiz, and I'm a small owner here from, in Salinas. I've been managing my business for over 10 years. I pay my taxes, get all my permits, health, fire permits, everything that is needed. And I'm here because we're having some issues. My income has gone down 50%, about 50 to 40% because other people have invaded our streets, other vendors that do not have their permits, that do not have anything, you know, they don't have their permits, they don't have their health permits or anything. So I'm here to ask the city to help us, to make them get their permits. And I'm asking you to do your job and enforce that. In June, we're going to get new permits. I'm asking you not to give out that many permits until people are educated and know how to get their permits, how to use them, how to have all the health permits and everything in order. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Adam Pentetitz. First, I just want to say well wishes to Councilmember McShane. I haven't always agreed with everything he's said or done, and I know not everyone else has, but if there's credit he deserves for one thing, it's genuinely listening to people and hosting and facilitating meetings where he listens to his constituents. So he sets a very high standard for public service. Secondly, I'd like to point out that it's been almost an entire month since the Housing and Land Use Committee decided to move forward with development of the rent stabilization ordinance. We were promised a robust public dialogue with many public meetings, and yet a month later, I still don't see a single public meeting scheduled. So I would like to see that remedied so that the people of Salinas do not feel disenfranchised by not having a voice in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Bernice Gonzalez, owner of Taco Truck at Volcan. Understand you have issues, I know because always I send emails. I know it's a lot of work for you guys, but please, we need the help. I know these illegal vendors look in the city because we have a great city, and we maybe you need educated. It's okay there. Welcome, everybody make a business in Salinas, but please, everybody with a permit and all solution. Please help with enforcement. Thank you very much.
Yo soy de Tres Marías, mi nombre es María Contreras. Este, yo nomás pido por favor que nos ayuden.
Por favor, espero uno momento para la traducción.
Es que me ponen bien nerviosa. Sí, María Contreras de Tres Marías. Sí. Yo, yo nomás digo que, que nos ayuden, ¿verdad? A mí me, me hace sentir mal todos los comentarios que están en las redes de que somos unos envidiosos, de que somos malas personas por, por, porque no queremos vendedores ilegales, ¿verdad? Pero yo pienso que si nos dieran, si a todos nos dieran la misma igualdad que ellos, pues si podíamos competir, pues bien. Entonces, si ellos pueden hacer muchas cosas, déjenos hacerlas a nosotros. Y yo, a la vez, digo yo, si no, si ellos no, ellos no pagan nada, pueden dar barato, pueden hacer muchas cosas. Nosotros no podemos, tenemos muchas restricciones. Si estuviéramos al mismo nivel, yo creo que nadie nos quejaríamos, porque la competencia yo pienso que no tenemos miedo. Somos buenos falluqueros, por eso estamos aquí, tenemos loncheras. Entonces, nomás pedimos que nos ayuden un poquito. Gracias. Me voy ya. No se quiere que se quede.
Hi, my name is María Contreras, and I'm from Tres Marías. And I just want a little bit of help. I want to tell you that I feel bad when I see like on social media and comments that we're bad people, that we do what we envy, the vendors that come here, and it's not that. The thing is that there has to be fair business. They're illegal vendors, they don't pay anything, so they're able to give things cheaper than we, that we have to pay, you know, for our permits, we have to have everything in order, everything in good standing. So, you know, so that allows them that they don't pay anything to give lower prices, and they don't have as much restrictions as we do. So all I need is a little bit of help, you know. We're not afraid of competition, we're hardworking, we have good products, but we need it to be fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hola, mi nombre es Juan Carlos, Juan López, y vengo de, de mi lonchera La Malucada. Quiero nomás que salubridad y correforbe, hagan su trabajo.
Malucada, sí.
Sí, La Malucada.
Okay. Malucada, okay.
Hi, so my name is Juan López, and I have a luncheon that's called Malucada. And all I want is, you know, health enforcement and the city to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Oh, hello, my name is Angela Orell. I am a young person that goes to Hartnell College, currently getting my education to, into city planning and development. So I feel like it's important for me to go to these meetings and be part of my community. And I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of people making an effort to make renting easier for the person that is renting, whether that be accountability when it comes to the renter in having to pay for, having to pay for more allocation fees, or whether that be more support for the renter or for the renting ordinance. I think it's really important for people that are, are like my parents, that rent and have rented for 20 years and have put a lot of money into, into renting, to not be able to be forced out of their homes in, through the price, price upgrade that I've heard. I'd just like to say that I'm in support of that, and I feel like it's important for people like me that are young, that have been students and people of their community to be in support of, of helping the people that are under rent to have any sort of help. So thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, soy José Trejo, propietario de Tacos El Pariente. Si venía con una, pues no es queja, sobre todo es que nos está afectando demasiado los puestos que ponen en las calles. No es justo que se lleguen ellos y se lleven el dinero de aquí de la comunidad, que salga para afuera sin ningún impuesto. Y a todos nos está afectando en el modo de que los trabajadores les recortamos horas, otros ya los descansamos, y ellos nomás llegan y se llevan el dinero. Esto, gracias.
Good afternoon, my name is José Trejo, and I am the owner of Taco El Pariente. And I'm here, well, not really to complain, but to let you guys know that all these street vendors are really affecting us. All these people that come on the street, they're taking the money away from the city, from the community, they're not paying taxes, they're affecting us, they're affecting our income because our, our income has gone down, so we have to cut hours on our employees, and some of them, we even have to lay them off. So thank you so much.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Packed house. It's exciting. Obviously, something happened here to create some energy, so that this council here, I have to give you credit here, that you have done just an abominable job so bad, you got some people here. So congrats on that. Listening to the wide array of issues that we have here in the city, right? We've got hookers, right, and prostitution and human trafficking, our daughters getting trafficked, and a lot of problems. We've got loiterers that are dirtying up neighborhoods that pay excessively high tax base to make sure that their neighborhoods are enjoyable for their constituents there. We've got rent control, right, and people talking about rent control, and I, you know, I would hope that they sign, they go down to Bank of America and chase and protest the high runaway interest rates and inflation. And let's start doing some curbs on, on some of that here. But instead, we're being led by a panel of completely unemployed people. I don't think anyone has a job, but maybe Kimberly, right? I'm not sure, but I think everyone's unemployed and they're getting money from somewhere. So if you want to look at corruption, let's look at each and every one of you, what's going on behind your doors. Thanks.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Bill Light, resident of Monterey County. You know, one other thing about the pop-up vendors, I saw the news report last night, and I've heard some of the comments here tonight. We used to have a truck on our street where we had a business, and one of the things they had to get from the city, and this is, I think, a question everybody can ponder, where did these pop-up vendors go to the bathroom? I mean, our vendor had to have us give him a written letter saying that they could, he, they could use our bathroom when they needed to. So that's just, that's a question for people to ponder about, pop-up vendors. I wanted to say, I watched your planning commission meeting, and I think it was these two brothers over here who have a business, that's a legit business, according to state law and city ordinance. And there was a, there was real machinations on that city, on that, on that committee about, you know, people were coming out of the woodwork, talking about heroin addicts and kids and it's close to schools, but it's, it's well beyond the actual threshold that the city set. So I really think Cana Cruz is kind of getting a raw deal. I mean, they're no worse than a liquor store, in my opinion, and I don't want to denigrate them by associating them with liquor, but you got lots of liquor stores all over the place in this town, and that's poison, and that's causing a lot of harm to our society. And, and I'm not saying, and I'm not trying to be judgmental on whether it's good or bad to drink or use cannabis, but I just think the, wow, is that it already?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, I would hope you would, I hope they appeal it, and I hope you guys consider their appeal. Thanks.
Thank you. Goes quickly when you're passionate. Okay.
Ready? Okay. Hi, my name is Michelle. I am here to support the Salinas United Business Association, Suba, and the local businesses. I seen my parents give up their life's worth savings to open their small business, and I constantly remind them to keep up with, you know, the quarterly taxes that we have to pay every three months, the permits, and just to make sure that we follow the city's regulations. I am here to ask your assistance in providing more funding to the Salinas City Permits Office, especially the Code of Enforcement, Code of Enforcement Department, so that they can operate in the evenings and during the weekends, to make sure that all businesses can have their permits up to date and follow the city's regulations and rules before this becomes a bigger issue in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name's Amy Salmina, I'm a property manager and long-life resident and fourth generation from Salinas. I want to give a little shout out, thank you, Councilman Barrera Orsonio Rocha for taking the time to meet with me, and Mr. Callahan as well, on multiple occasions. So thank you for really taking the time. And Mrs. Gonzalez, I really want to apologize because my email did not go through to you, and I would love to meet with you, so I'll make sure to get that through, and it was unintentional. So thank you so much. And Mr. Sandoval, I really hope that you can take the time to meet with us. So we have been working tirelessly, I know that you guys are extremely busy, so we're really trying to put together public forum and doing things to help out with the rent control, we'll rent stabilization and tenant protection, and we understand that you guys have a lot going on. So, and there's our local property management companies and, and property owners who are really wanting to sit down to make this all happen, and we're organizing, we've been meeting, we're scheduling with CCA, Echo, BHC. We really want this to work, and we want something that's really productive. So it's going to be extremely difficult to do it within the timeframe that you guys are all wanting, because we really want something that works for our entire community. I personally grew up in East Salinas, so I understand, I'm, we're boot collar workers, my parents are boot collar workers, and I really don't want to hurt the middle class, the people who are paying rent and don't receive the subsidies as others. And so we really need this ordinance to go ahead and work, so if we can maybe push the 1482 for right now to get things going, so we can help make that work and organize that, that would be really great. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Mary Anna Warden, and I'm still alive after my heart surgery.
Congratulations.
So I'm here, back here. I'm here to let everybody know how much this city has to thank for Steve McShane, for all the work he's done in this city. I've been involved with him since he came to the city. I've been on the traffic commission, on the police advisory commission, but wherever we were doing a cleanup, Steve was always there. No matter what meeting I've gone to, no matter what side of town, Steve was always there. I've seen him work with the young people, the little kids, as well as the high school kids. Steve has always been there. He's the one that brought back our, our Christmas tree lighting. He's done so many other things that he's brought back to this city that we had stopped doing, and we have so much gratitude to give to him. Most of the people I've talked to are sorry to see you leave, Steve, although they hope, they know you need the time with your folks and your children. But I want to tell you, everyone I've talked to, they said how much they appreciate you and how much they love you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenos tardes. Creo que habíamos ahorita aquí mayoritario de loncheros. Yo me identifico, mi nombre es Jesús Pérez. Soy propietario de La Paloma, lonchara La Paloma. Hay uno, tenemos un dilema ahorita con los, con los vendedores. Quiero ser bien breve porque quiero que me entiendan esta parte, por favor. Las personas que, que salemos a, a buscar la comida para nuestros hijos, tenemos todos el mismo derecho. En lo que, en lo que, en lo que estoy de acuerdo con los compañeros es que necesitan, necesitamos, por favor, que ustedes nos ayuden a educar a las personas que están entrando a vender, porque mi preocupación mía es, como están vendiendo ellos comida, es posible que enfermen a alguien, y luego nosotros vamos, a lo mejor van a ir a empezar que fuimos nosotros, porque lo están vendiendo al interperi. Por favor, les pedimos en nombre de todos los, los colegas que nos ayuden y hagan algo. Es todo lo que les quiere decir. Gracias.
Good afternoon. Well, I think most of the people that is here today are own loncheras or street trucks. My name is Jesús Pérez, and I'm the owner of La Paloma. And we're going through a hard time. We have a dilemma, because, I'm going to be brief because I really want you to understand this position, and the thing is that we're the people that go out, look for, you know, to make a living so we can feed our children, and we all have the same right. But the thing is that there's other people that are coming here, and they're street vendors, and they're not really complying with all the laws. They don't have the permits, and I'm worried because they can make other people get sick, and we don't want people to think that it's us that are getting these people sick. So we really need you to educate them, to help us, so they can comply with all the rules, and, you know, and just help all the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we really need you to educate them, to help us, so they can comply with all the rules and, you know, and just help all the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, city council members. Mr. Pia and city attorney. We are hearing a thing that's been repetitious here for, I don't know how many years since I've been here. Now, it's really, really out of control. And I think it's about time you guys take it serious, because nothing has been done. This past weekend, we had a lot of vendors in our park, and for those that said, where do people go use their bathroom? They all go to Montebello Park on Saturday and Sunday. We have vendors there and we're asking, we're not, we're not trying to be disrespectful, but we are asking that the door for the school in back of the bathrooms be locked. That door is not supposed to be open. It's an emergency door for the school, and it's not for the park. The city says is the school, the school says is the park. So, you know, enough is enough. We've been asking for your help since 2016. We are now in 2024. And every, every, every time you guys say, we'll get you this, we'll get you that, we're still waiting for that, come and get that. We need the help now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Yeah, first I'd like to say, hola amigo, to Mr. McShane and Kimberly, I'm gonna pray for you. I'm not joking. I believe that some of this stuff is based off of bias and personality, and I will have you in my prayers. We have farming equipment that's running around in our park at Montebello off of Pardova and Freedom. This is the Vanguard. I announced this, I'll announce it again, knowing that you will do nothing. I believe that a fiscal audit, fiscal audit should be managed by the city and that you guys should be able to, you know, balance your books and to show that the money is good. Somebody accused you of not even having jobs. And so, I think the fact that I have fiscal audit on here is in play with what they were saying. You celebrate business, but you can't support business, right? Today is the day of business, yet we have a room full of business owners that you don't support. You don't support your middle class. You making announcements about how you celebrate something, but you don't have the ability to manage yourselves in a way where you support your community. I'll stop there. Congratulations. I also believe that if there's an opportunity to appeal your decision, you should announce that there's going to be appeal. So, if you say that you're going to set up a development and that is appealable, you should announce at the end of the meeting that you can have an appeal.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
You know, I think I know where just about all of you work, so definitely jobs there. Name is Eric Peterson. Two quick things. I've spent, I've been in about half a dozen states so far this month. The eclipse was great, Colorado wasn't. Streets and highways are trash all over. But my main point is, we should look at changing how we elect people so that the ultimate winner gets over 50%. Went through the last 20 years of election results, and we had two council members elected with 32% each. And we had a mayor, no names mentioned here, who got elected with 36%. Monterey County does fine with a, you know, basically a runoff system, top two. A lot of other entities do. Some have a runoff election right after the results are confirmed in, in December. And we really need to look at that, because quite frankly, the two who got 32% weren't very good. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Dave Clark. And about seven or eight years ago, Steve McShane brought Neighborhood Watch to the city of Salinas. I talked to him about the need of it, because I'm a retired deputy, and we were having, this was Murder USA for a long time. And we had a lot of burglaries, we had a lot of petty thefts, broken windows in the entire city. Well, Steve said, well, start having meetings in neighborhoods to have a Neighborhood Watch. He said, start a Facebook group, Dave. So now I have 14,900 members of Neighborhood Watch helping Salinas. Thank him. When you lose him, you're going to lose Neighborhood Watches and support for Neighborhood Watches. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Sí, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Iran Pacheco y soy dueño de un pequeño negocio que es Salinas de Tacos Pacheco. Tengo trabajando aquí en los, en el pequeño negocio como 15 años y 16 años. Y yo quería pedirles de favor que nos ayuden. Ya mencionaron mis compañeros de los puestos ambulantes que están en el área de Salinas. Tenemos muchos puestos de Salinas, en Salinas que no están pagando sus impuestos, sus permisos, no tienen sus cosas en regla como debe de ser. Cuando nosotros hicimos una inversión de una lonchera de más de 100,000 dólares, que aún todavía estamos pagando, no es justo que ellos vengan con un carrito de tacos de 3,000 dólares haciendo la competencia. Entonces, les pedemos de favor que por ahí nos ayuden, saquen los permisos, renovar permisos. Venemos saliendo del invierno, de la temporada mala. Entonces, estamos bien gastados nosotros y queremos que nos ayuden por ese lado. Por qué? Porque venimos de saliendo de una racha malísima. Entramos a la temporada, que es lo, cuando nosotros recuperamos algo, pero con estas invasión de estos puestos de tacos ambulantes, pues es imposible nosotros seguir en el negocio. Y queremos que, de favor, nos ayuden por ahí. Y que los hagan cumplir a estos ambulantes que vienen de otras ciudades. Vienen de Fresno, de Sacramento, desde Los Ángeles, están viniendo estas gentes, y no nomás aquí en Salinas, en otras ciudades. No sé si han mirado en Vallejo, en Modesto, en Sacramento. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Iran Pacheco, and I am the owner of Pacheco Tacos. I've been working with, for my business for about 15 years. And I want to ask you to help us, because it's not fair. All these pop-up vendors come to Salinas, they're not paying their permits. We invested about $100,000 to build up our business, and it's not fair for a, a little pop-up taco business that costs $3,000 to come and compete with us. It really affects us. We have been, we had a bad winter. We're just coming out of the winter and starting to make some, and make our ends meet. And then all this happens, the business, the cycles. We have been invaded by these pop-up businesses that they don't really, they're not up to code. They don't get their permits, they're not in good standings, and they come from other cities. They come from Fresno, from LA, from Vallejo, from Modesto. So, really, we're here to ask you to help us.
Gracias.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else in public comment in the chambers, I'll go to Zoom for public comments. For any member of the public, just as a friendly reminder, we are taking up item for the District Three vacancy at 7:30 PM. These are items that are not on today's agenda. And we have one hand raised, Wes White.
I'm mute.
Hi, good evening. Wes White, Salinas, Monterey County Homeless Union Co-President, part of the Poor Peoples Campaign, a national call for moral revival, and the National Union of Homeless, where we have about 20 states involved. We have 27 championships in California. Yesterday, there was a SCOTUS hearing, Supreme Court, regarding Johnson Grant's pass, which would basically, you know, the question is, can, can the city just remove people without a place for people to be, especially not housing indoors? I will say that the outreach has not been as fruative as it should be, you know, with probably near, nearly 10%, if that, of getting people into housing. So, but still stealing everybody's survival gear. People need running water and electricity, people need some basic amenities, a bathroom, kitchen, and, and these things need to be, they actually need to be on public property, not along the train tracks, because that is unsafe. And, and we need to provide services like we did during COVID. So, shelter in place needs to be the rule, and we actually need to treat our United States citizens, and even those who are not, as if they are, if they live outside. Stop the sweeps.
Thank you. Any other member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Just a reminder to council and to staff, it's 5:00 PM, we have a hard stop for closed session at 6:30. So we have an hour and a half to get through five public hearings, a study session on our general plan, and 12 items on consent. So with that, we'll go ahead to our first item. 24-215, the fiscal year 2425, Citywide Schedule of Fees and Service Charges Annual Update. And we have Abe Pedrosa, our Senior Finance Management Analyst, to give the presentation. And I will make a gentle reminder to staff, I'd ask that you keep presentations succinct pretty please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Abe Pedrosa, Senior Finance Management Analyst. And this is the Citywide Schedule of Fees and Service Charges Annual Update for Fiscal Year 2425. At this time, staff recommends that city council approve a resolution authorizing adjustments and additions to the Citywide Schedule of Fees and Service Charges effective July 1st, 2024. Here's some historical information regarding the Consumer Price Index increase for the year, staff's corresponding recommendation, and ultimately would council adopt it as the increase. For a period of three years, from 1718 to 1920, the CPI increase was in the 3% range, which is what staff recommended and what council adopted. For FY 2021, the CPI was 3.3%. COVID hit and council delayed its decision on any increase until October of that year. Given the uncertainty surrounding the state of the economy as a result of the pandemic, council then decided on no increase for the year. Over the next two years, council adopted an increase of 2.5% annually, which differed from the CPI increase and staff's recommendation. Last year, however, council adopted an increase of 5.6%, which again coincided with the CPI. And this year, staff is recommending a 3.7% increase per the CPI. This slide details the discussion, first noting the Finance Committee meeting on April 9th. At the meeting, the Finance Committee supported staff's recommendation of a 3.7% increase per the CPI. Additionally, outreach was conducted with the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce, SUBA, and the Nonprofit Alliance of Monterey County. Staff was able to confirm receipt of the communications and did not receive any notice of objection or issue regarding the proposed fee schedule for next year. Ultimately, staff will adjust the fee schedule at the rate determined by city council. Here's a summary of the proposed changes by fee group. Seven new fees are being added. 51 fees cannot be changed due to mandates, and 68 fees remain unchanged due to the agreement with Monterey County on animal services. Excluding those, 97% of the fees have been increased by the CPI, while 3% were either increased by a different metric, are unchanged, or have decreased per department discretion as detailed here in the staff report and on the fee schedule. Lastly, this slide is in response to council member Orsonio's inquiry at the Finance Committee meeting regarding the most frequently used fees and corresponding increases. Unfortunately, staff was not able to determine which fees are most frequently used, but did want to note that every fee is grouped by type and listed on the fee schedule. The current, the current amount is provided along with the proposed increase per the CPI adjustment as shown here. Once approved, the final fee schedule document is posted to the city's website on July 1st of every year. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, you get an A+ for succinctness. Thank you. I'll go out, or I'll start with council member questions. I'll start to my left. Council member McShane.
No questions, Mayor.
Okay, council member Rocha, council member Sandoval, council member Gonzalez, council member Barrera, questions? Council member Orsonio. Great, okay, sweeping the line. We'll go out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Hi. I'm David Masoniv in the 3rd District, and sorry to break your record, you were doing so well.
It's okay.
I just have a question about, about fees, because part of me feels like fees are another type of tax. Now, I know a lot of people aren't going to agree with that, but it feels that way. Anybody noticed how expensive it is to go to the gas station, buy your groceries, do all of those things? By increasing your fees, you're not helping people develop business, you're, you're slowing it down. And this city needs business, and it needs the help of the city by not necessarily giving grants out, but by actually just reducing the cost to do business here. So, anyway, I wanted to say thank you very much to Steve McShane. Awesome, awesome 14 years? Yeah, good job. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other member of the public in the chambers wish to comment on this item? Okay, we'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I'll come back to council for final comments. Council member McShane? Council member Rocha?
No comments, I'll move the item for approval, and thank you to staff for all of your work on this.
Council member Sandoval? Okay, council member Gonzalez? All right, motion made by council member Rocha, seconded by council member Gonzalez. Council member Barrera, final comments?
Just want to say thank you to the staff. Lots of work, so we appreciate everything you do for the city. Thank you.
Council member Orsonio? Just a final comment for me. I know this came to the Finance Subcommittee meeting, very much appreciate you getting confirmation on the multiple fee schedules from business communities, just to ensure that they had received it, they had reviewed it, and did not have comments. So thank you for doing that. With that, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Council member Barrera?
Yes.
Council member Gonzalez? Council member McShane?
Yeah.
Council member Orsonio?
Yes.
Council member Rocha?
Yes.
Council member Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig? Yes. Motion passes. Excellent, thank you. We'll go on to ID 24-214, City Development Impact Fees Annual Adjustment. And we have Adriana Robles, her city engineer here to give the presentation.
Hi, good afternoon. Okay, yes, we're here to, to ask the council to, once again, take a look at our development impact fees and to do our annual adjustment. So the council has the authority through the California Government Code and also through the Salinas Municipal Code to impose development impact fees on developments in order to mitigate their impacts. Fees are adjusted annually based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index for the calendar year of 2023, 2024. I guess calendar year technically is only 2023, is, it was 2.6%. So, part of what our code requires is that these fees are managed separately and that an annual report is presented to the city council. This is that report that you are seeing. Just as a summary, these are the fees that are collected. At times, there are provisions in our code which waive some of these fees, specifically some of the fees that impact residential development. So, what you see in the box is basically all the fees that apply to commercial and industrial development, and then all of these fees apply to residential development. The breakup of the fees are shown in Exhibits A and B. So, this is the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures. Basically, this gives you the balance of where the different expenditures and balances were with regards to the various fees as of the end of February of this year, February 29th. And the estimated balance, total balance of the accounts is 10.1 million. So, we, we did do, similar to Abe, we, we did reach out to the various development organizations, including local developers and the Central Coast Builders Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and then the, and then SUBA. We also made a presentation before the Finance Committee. This is not a project based on the California Environmental Quality Act. And the recommended motion is to approve a resolution increasing, increasing city development impact fees by 2.6% effective July 1st. impact fees by 2.6% effective July 1st.
Excellent, thank you. We'll go to council members for questions. Councilmember McShane? Councilmember Rocha? Okay, councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, thank you. Can you show me the slide on the outreach, please? I'm just curious on, I know you say you make with these business, the Chamber, SUBA, developers?
Yes.
I'm just curious, what's, what's the dialogue? What, what happens here in this outreach? How do they feel about this report?
We did not receive any feedback. The only feedback that was received was during the Finance, Finance Committee meeting.
During the what?
Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, were some of these groups in the Finance Committee?
So the only, it was basically Kevin Dayton representing the, the Chamber of Commerce, who, who spoke before the Finance Committee.
And?
And, and he basically said, you know, it's another fee, but it's something that needed to happen.
And I think, you know, just listening to this gentleman in front of us, I think there, there are things that need to happen. I guess where I'm concerned, even though fees are needed, I'm just concerned of the quality of our service. I hope it goes hand in hand as, as, as we charge fees because we, bless you, because we have to, but I hope that our, as these individuals come and do business with us, I hope that the quality of our service is, is up to par with those fees.
So just for clarification, this is not a service fee. These are development impact fees. These are basically to make improvements to the system to accommodate development.
And that I understand, but when you say fees, it's money and people pay, so I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Osornio, questions? I'll have a, a question for you, just from the context of what we had discussed at the Finance Subcommittee. So I know that some of that, you, some of the conversation was around outreach. Were you able to successfully circle back with all of those stakeholders, get confirmation that they had reviewed the development impact fees, and then they don't have comments on them? I just want to make sure that we didn't just send an email and we got no response, kind of?
We sent multiple emails.
And did you get responses from everyone?
No. But we, the only person that responded actually was Kevin Dayton to say, received.
Okay. Okay, and was there follow-up after the Finance Subcommittee meeting? Because that was direction that was given by the Finance Subcommittee.
It was not my understanding that it was also applied to the development impact fees.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, going to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Come back to council for comment and action. I'll start to my left, councilmember McShane. Okay, councilmember Rocha?
I want to thank you for all of your work on this. Development impact fees are critical to being able to provide the services we need for our city. And also, I appreciate the fact you sent multiple emails. Your role in this city is to create the staff report, present this. Your role is not to chase around people to do their jobs. And so I appreciate what you did. There are people that are paid to weigh in on this and have business advocacy organizations, and if you sent multiple emails, it's up to them to follow up if they want to make their voices heard. And also, if, you know, they don't have anything to particularly say, then that's okay. Mr. Dayton came to the meeting, expressed his opinions, and we're appreciative for those that engage in that process. But this is a critical service that needs to happen for our city. So I would gladly move the item for approval.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yeah, I think in the future, we'll be having a presentation of our, an agenda item about our communications and outreach plan. And I think at that time, it would be great to be able to say, let's get at least a confirmation, you know, do you, can you please reply? Want to make sure they don't go into their spam or something. So that would be what I would encourage, make sure we know that they received that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera, final comments?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by councilmember Rocha, seconded by councilmember Barrera. Councilmember Barrera, do you have other comments?
Yeah, just want to say thank you for the work. I know that's not easy, but I'm always concerned, regardless of what it is, when you say fees, you know, to me, it's, I'm just always concerned, however this fee is paid and for what it's paid, I hope that the quality of our service is up to par with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Osornio?
Further report?
Just final comments on my end, and I would agree with councilmember Sandoval. It's just make, making sure that people, it's part of any part of public engagement, is just making sure that we are meeting people where they're at. So, thank you, and we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. On to 24-216, the Sanitary Sewer Development Impact Fee Update. We have Adriana Robles again. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Yes, so the previous report that you just saw did not include the sanitary sewer development impact fees. The reason for this is because we wanted to take a look at the fees as they related to the update of the sanitary sewer master plan that was done and approved by the council last year. So just a quick background again, the California Code and both the municipal code gives you the authority to, to impose development impact fees to mitigate development impacts. Also, on September 28th, 2021, the governor signed Assembly Bill 602 with regards to development impact fees. This bill basically required a nexus study when doing an update to development impact fees. Also, last year in May, May 2nd, the council adopted the sanitary sewer master plan update. And what basically this did, it gave us an updated view of the condition of our sanitary sewer. And with this, this identified 21 operation and maintenance repair projects, and it prioritized them. Part of that, part of what was identified with that report was also the need for a nexus study for development impact fee updates. So just a little bit of background, the, the current sanitary sewer development impact fee is based on the 2011 sanitary sewer master plan. And it's based on, for residential, it's based on the number of bedrooms. And then for, for commercial and industrial, it's based on the area of the building and the number of fixtures. So what happened with AB 602, another, another thing that, that got added was that all fees needed to be calculated based on building area. So when we, when we did this nexus study, we basically converted all the fees and calculated the fees based on building area. And that's for everything, for residential, commercial, and industrial. In order, so this would allow us to comply with AB 602. So the proposed sanitary sewer development impact fee schedule for residential is 1.2847 per square foot of building. For commercial, it's 1.1215 per thousand square feet of building area. For industrial, it's .5608 per thousand square feet of building area. Again, the, these figures, the notices to this meeting, the notices to the, to the Finance Committee meeting were sent out to the Chamber of Commerce, to SUBA, to local developers, to the Central Coast Builders Association, and were presented before the Finance Committee. There's no fiscal impact at this time, and imposing and updating development fees allows the city to more, to be more fiscally responsible and sustainable. And again, this is not a project based on the California Environmental Quality Act. And the request, okay, the request is to approve a resolution updating the sanitary sewer development impact fee schedule.
Great, thank you. To my left, councilmember McShane. Councilmember Rocha? Councilmember Sandoval? Okay, councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera?
Approve.
Okay. Councilmember Osornio? Okay. I have a motion, may I get a second? Okay, councilmember, motion made by councilmember Barrera, seconded by councilmember Rocha. We'll go out to the public for this item. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I don't know much about what's going on here, but I keep hearing fees and alignment, to align with. That just means you're all figuring out how to raise things, raise fees, adjust fees to fit everything else, but when does every, when can things go down for once? You know, fees go down, rents go down, everything just dropped down to maybe how it was, you know? What, years ago, it was like 250 a gallon of gas, now it's at 5, 6, you know, whatever. It's like outrageous. It's just, things need to adjust downward, not upward. That's just me. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, David Mason of again. I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, so I don't want to take too much time, but I don't see how charging a fee to somebody is beneficial to having something built. I mean, the, the city is involved in, the city is not a profit-making center. Okay? The city is a cost center, which means you don't make money, you just do your job. So to increase fees to somebody who's trying to build a construction that we desperately need seems like it's counterintuitive. So I would just ask the, the council to consider, I mean, I kind of already get this one's going through, okay, so, but in the future, maybe really consider that fee, the fees are to help the citizens do something right. It's to help the building committees to build something right. It's all about safety. It's not about funding other projects within the city. So, anyway, that's, I'm kind of rambling. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, we'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll come back to council members for final comments. We already have a motion in a second. Councilmember McShane? Okay, councilmember Rocha?
Yeah, just a point of information from Adriana. It's my understanding that fees cannot have the city make any profit. It's just to essentially reimburse itself for costs associated with things, or can you clarify the profit element of that?
That's correct. So these fees are specifically to, say, upsize a sewer line in order to facilitate development. So the last thing we actually need is to allow development to move forward and then not have the capacity in our system, you know, and have things back up.
Thank you. Hopefully that was a point of clarification. No further comment.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your intentional effort. I know that, I know we want to support local developments and, and expansion, but, you know, just like we're facing with our roads and, and the traffic impact fees, or maybe the infrastructure impact fees, where we cannot subsidize the road improvements for these developments, I think it's, it's important that we, we don't subsidize these private developers. We want to encourage them. I think offering them better service is great, but unfortunately, we don't, we're not in a position to subsidize growth in that capacity.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera?
Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Osornio? All right, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we will go on to 24-220, the 2023 AB 481 Annual Report, Renewal of Ordinance Number 2657 and Purchase of AB 481 Equipment. And we have, we will be receiving a report from John Murray, our Acting Chief of Police.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'll keep it short. So we're presenting on the Assembly Bill AB 481, the requirement that we report on military equipment that we have at the Salinas Police Department. Ordinance renewed by the city in August 22nd of 2023. AB 481 Annual Report was released by our department March 16th of 2024, and I presented to the PCA C on March 27th. We held a community meeting on AB 481, reporting to the community on our military equipment on April 15th, and here we are at City Council, fulfilling our requirement to report to council on our military equipment. So Category 1, unmanned aerial systems, drones. The purpose of this is to support law enforcement operations, preserve life, and enhance public safety. Our authorized uses, we use these for an overhead view that would assist officers, incident commanders, planning in response to tactical operations or suspect-initiated events in the city where we're able to deploy the drone, get an eye before officers arrive on scene. We use it for collection of evidence, get a bird's eye view, locating fleeing suspects, hostage situations, high-risk search warrants. Let me go back one. The number of authorized uses we have this past year was 312. Annual cost, $7,718. No complaints associated with this. Unmanned remotely powered ground vehicles, says robots, but they're, they're operated by officers. The purpose of this is during critical incidents, to remotely gain a visual and audio view of the suspect, gather information. Typically, we'll put it into a residence before we send officers to get a, ensure the residence is safe for our operations. We can use it to inspect dangerous locations, but also dangerous items, potential bomb threats, locate suspects. We can use it to deliver items to hostage takers, open doors, clear buildings, and it's a method of two-way communication. Got ahead of myself there again. Number of authorized uses, three. Annual cost, zero. Complaints related to it, no complaints. Our MRAP vehicles, Rescue 1 and 2, armored vehicles, they have no offensive capabilities. These are big rolling bank vaults that we use to provide cover to officers. The primary use, safely transport personnel to and from critical incidents, extract citizens from volatile situations. We used it very effectively on Sun Street this past year. We use these vehicles in squad of SWAT operations, VSCF operations, and patrol operations. These are primarily used for pre-planned and high-risk search warrants. We've also used them for evacuation purposes, both on Sun Street, but also during floods because of the high rise of the vehicle. We're able to use this to load people, get them out of the area, and we've done that successfully. We had 28 uses in the past year. The annual cost is just over $2,000. That's for maintenance and such. And we have one complaint, and that was from a member of our PCA C, about presenting the vehicle out at public events. It's a fair criticism. The mobile command vehicle, so this again has no offensive capabilities, the big Winnebago with communications equipment for us, provides command response in critical incidents, natural disasters, a mobile base of operations for us at events that are taking place out in the community. We also have our ICAC vehicle. This was purchased with grant, is for internet crimes against children. It's a mobile forensics lab, a very effective tool for us. Use the three, use these vehicles three times throughout the year. The cost, just over $1,300. No complaints associated with the mobile command vehicle. The ICAC vehicle, just over $700. Three uses, no complaints. Breaching rounds, these are frangible rounds, they're ceramic, they're used to breach doorways, lock doors. Typically, we would use this in hostage rescue-type situations. They, they're available for high-risk incidents in order to expeditiously get us into a residence. Again, frangible. Number of authorized uses, zero. Cost, zero. Complaints associated to it, none. This is the tool we use to use those rounds. The purpose, again, quickly defeat locks for a fast entry, potentially to rescue someone. High-risk incidents typically used by the SWAT team. We've had no uses of this piece of equipment, no costs associated, and no complaints. Specialized firearms, obviously our special weapons and tactics team has specialized firearms. Purpose, equips officers to address risks posed to the public. Think of an active shooter event, hostage situation, Sun Street again. shooter event, hostage situation, Sun Street again, these are tools that our SWAT team has on hand, our patrol officers do have some long rifles available as well. Uh, these firearms are used as precision weapons, uh, to address a threat that's a danger to the public, active shooter situations, well-armed individuals. Number of authorized uses, one, and that's gonna be the Sun Street incident. Costs, zero. Unauthorized use or complaints, zero as well. This is a firearm accessory, it says they're explosive, launches explosive projectiles, we have no explosive projectiles, that's not its purpose. Uh, this use, this is used primarily for launching 40-millimeter, less than lethal No uses throughout the year, zero costs, no complaints. Distraction devices, this is a tool we use quite often with tactical operations, it affords us a few seconds of time, uh, to get an advantage over an adversary and get them in custody peacefully. Uh, these are light, sound diversionary devices, they do not throw out any projectiles, they are not explosives, they simply create a loud noise, put out a lot of light, we use these for barricaded subjects, high-risk search warrant services, again, to buy us a few seconds of time. Uh, number of uses, 24, uh, annual cost, zero, authorized use or complaints, none. Distraction devices, chemical agents, uh, you're gonna see that the number of uses here is 52, that's Sun Street. Uh, we deployed chemical agents there, it's basically pepper spray, in old language, mace was the old chemical, uh, we used, but this is the modern version of that, this affords us ability to put it into a residence or a vehicle, make the person uncomfortable, bring them out to us. Annual cost, zero, complaints, zero. 40-millimeter projectile, we use this very effectively, this is a great de-escalation tool, it's a less-than-lethal option for us. Uh, this affords us to create some time, distance, deal with, uh, an adversary from behind cover, and um, again, a less-than-lethal option, it's paying compliance, it gets them to go along and submit, we, we use it very effectively. Number of uses, 16, annual costs, $2,600, just over that, uh, that's replacing rounds, maintenance, et cetera. Unauthorized uses, zero, and complaints, zero. Last year's purchases, uh, drones, you can see the drones listed there, the Matrice 350, the 30T, the Mini 3, so during the Sun Street incident, about seven of our drones were shot down by the suspect and destroyed, we had to replace those, fortunately they were insured, so that cost was covered. Uh, specialized ammunition, again, from Sun Street, we had to replenish, uh, the 308 ammunition, distraction devices, replenish those, smoke, I spoke about how we use those, we had to replenish that. 40-millimeter rounds, we replenish those as we use those. Uh, this year, we're asking council to authorize the purchase of four precision rifles. Uh, our precision rifles have aged out, they're on the edge of eight, nine years old, uh, they do suffer wear and tear, we also learned from Sun Street that it was time to, uh, upgrade our tools to better protect the public and protect the lives of our police officers, I'm happy to answer any questions related to that. And staff recommends approval of resolution, renew the ordinance for number 2657 pertaining to military equipment funding, acquisition, and use. Authorizes direct purchase of precision rifles for a total cost not to exceed $10,499.11. Any questions?
I will go to council, uh, Councilmember McShane. Okay, Councilmember Rocha?
Yeah, I have a question, um, when this was first presented, you know, I had concerns over, cause for me, I don't necessarily have any concerns with the individual, um, equipment itself, but rather, this is an ordinance that will, um, speak to how these, um, equipments will be used, right, it's an ordinance pertaining to the use of military equipment. Um, and in the staff report, I did read that two committee members from the Police Community Advisory Committee, um, mentioned concerns regarding, um, the use of the, um, MRAP at community events, um, and I had worked with you on the, um, privacy ordinance pertaining to the use of ALPRs, and I wanted to ask if you'd be willing to, to work with me, uh, and perhaps even other members of this council, even in the community, to, um, develop some language pertaining to the use of the MRAP, because, um, it is something that exists in our community, and not everyone feels it should be used at community events, but people still acknowledge the, the important role it serves in terms of community safety. Would you be willing to work on language regarding that?
I'm always open to dialogue, of course. The, the MRAP, we get so many requests for that for community events, um, it, a lot, a lot of kids love it, it gives us an opportunity to open it up and be transparent to the community, and give everybody an opportunity to look at it, climb in it, and see that it has absolutely no offensive capabilities. It's, uh, as I describe it to people, it's a large bank vault, all it is, is a trap to stop bullets from hitting us, and we've used it effectively as a backdrop to stop bullets for going into residential areas in Salinas. So, we're, I'm happy to discuss anything, it's a valuable tool for us, it has saved lives, and it's a great, uh, tool for us to get out into the community and engage some of our folks, but yes, of course.
Um, okay, uh, well, I'll wait for comments, those are all my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Sandoval, questions? Councilmember Gonzalez, questions? Councilmember Barrera, questions? Okay, Councilmember Osornio?
Mayor, I'm gonna reserve for comments.
Great, I'll go out to the public, any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Name is Eric Peterson, you've all heard my story on this, um, uh, on the armored vehicle, um, in particular, the one that's actually Army surplus. Uh, when my neighbor was murdered some years back, uh, the suspect was in a house, and they used the armored vehicle to capture him, no injuries, he had all his rights, and quite fortunately, he exercised the right to plead guilty, and he is now in prison, but the significant thing is, I don't know how dangerous it would have been to do that maneuver without the, the armored vehicle, but there were no injuries. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll go over to Zoom, any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on the item, uh, regarding AB 481? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment, we'll go back to councilmembers for final comment and action, Councilmember McShane?
Yeah, I just wanna really acknowledge publicly, chief, we have no harder working, more successful department than ours out there. Um, you just, you really do a great job, uh, with limited resources and, quite frankly, limited staff. Uh, you know, this sort of report, uh, is telling, right? And I think it, it, it really gives the example that there's that transparency. You know, what, what are these tools? How are they used? Um, and, and how, could it impact the public? So, I just wanna thank you, you've done a good job to acknowledge that, and I think we are meeting or exceeding what the state and what the industry requires of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Sure, just, just a follow-up, I, I had a resident reach out about drones, and some ideas about marking, markings on drones, so, um, I forwarded you that, and that was my only comment. I appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Uh, Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, I appreciate when the community gets involved, I, I think as the police department engages with our community, you provide a safer community, especially when children start getting educated as well. And with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember McShane, we'll go on for final comment, Councilmember Osornio?
Yes, thank you for the report, and I just wanted to say thank you, I did see the, uh, the entire meeting with, at the PCA C, um, and I just wanted to say thank you for engaging the, not only the folks that were in the audience, but also, uh, the committee members that were there, and just kind of going into that dialogue, I just, I can appreciate that, and, um, I know some of those questions that folks had were a little bit, made things go by a, a lot slower, but I just thank you for taking the time and, and really make sure, uh, ensuring that they got their answers, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your work on the annual report, chief, thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I request a friendly amendment to the motion? Um, to, for, to move forward, but to provide further direction to work, um, with members of the council and community members on additional language pertaining to the use of the MRAP, it's not gonna make a contingent upon approval, but rather, just further direction to work regarding that language, to come back as part of the renewal, um, agenda item this upcoming year.
And, and I like that, but I would, uh, if I may, Mayor, I would like to hear from the chief, uh, how he feels about that.
As I mentioned, always open to dialogue, I think that's very important in our community, and we are trying to be transparent, more so than ever. Um, the, the MRAP is a critical tool for us to use, uh, we often deploy it on a moment's notice, a quick call, we get a driver in it, we deploy it, and we are able to defuse critical situations and preserve life, and solve these in a peaceful manner. It has no offensive capability, uh, I often think if it wasn't painted black, there wouldn't be as much, uh, concern about it, but it is the number-one requested, uh, item we have for community events. Kids love climbing on it, it presents an opportunity for us to engage with them, so, I'm open to dialogue, I certainly wanna have the community have a voice, uh, I would ask that that vehicle remain a tool that we can deploy at the discretion of our command staff for emergencies and for pre-planned operations.
So, with that, I'm gonna, hang on, really quickly, I'm gonna go ahead and, because the, Councilmember Barrera has the floor right now.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna accept, in supporting the chief, I'm also gonna, uh, the friendly amendment, as long as we don't tie the chief's hands.
The friendly amendment is not binding to the use of, in an emergency situation.
As long as the police department is able to do their job, because they, they know what they're doing.
Okay, and then we have a second by Councilmember, okay, so friendly amendment has been accepted, we'll go ahead and call for the vote, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, excellent, thank you, appreciate it. Um, all right, we are going on to our study session, 24-190, the General Plan Update, Vision Salinas 2040, Public Safety and Health and Environmental Justice Study, Study Session, from Monica Germlaan, our senior planner.
Hello. Uh, good evening, mayor and councilmembers, excited to be here for our second study session for the general plan, and extra excited because the Public Safety and Health and Environmental Justice Chapters are the first of our, of their kind for the city. Um, and this council and, um, all the different departments in our community all played a role in their creation, and, excuse me, I also wanna say, this was all vetted by both Chief Klemic and, uh, Chief Murray, as well as LCS leadership, so, and our steering committee, so we've got all the bases covered, and we'll still be doing additional engagement, uh, later on in the summer. And I know I have a very short time to speak about this, so if you wanna discuss this further, just let me know. Uh, just to give a little bit of context as to why I'm here today, this study session, uh, gives council the opportunity to provide feedback on these specific topics, and it's also an opportunity for us to provide an update in terms of where we are, and also our community engagement, and lastly, we paired these two topics because they are so closely related and have overlapping goals and, um, policies. So, first up, public safety, such a smooth transition, uh, the previous general plan, and most general plans have a more broad safety element that covers hazard mitigation, like fires, earthquakes, et cetera, and also public safety, which is more on police and fire services, neighborhood watch, community relations, things like that. For this general plan, we took the broad safety element and broke it up into two categories, environmental safety and public safety, and we did this to make public, the public safety, safety section, uh, more intentional and robust, given the council interest, uh, and the community interest in this topic. Uh, the public safety goals and policies are structured under these four categories, community conflict resolution and violence prevention, police response alternatives, fire and police services, and crime prevention through environmental design. Also important to note that staff, um, worked closely with PD and Fire, as well as Neighborhood Services, in the creation of this framework. Uh, did a lot of engagement, so for, uh, given that this was our first public safety element, it was important to be as thorough as possible in terms of our community goals and priorities. Uh, happy to report, we had over 4,500 residents engaged in this topic, we had two workshops, one in English and one in Spanish, and we had collaboration from both, uh, PD and Fire. We had four pop-up activities and interactive, which are basically interactive surveys out in the community, and we also had a youth survey facilitated by CCA, uh, General Plan Youth Ambassador, so they did those surveys out in, um, at their schools, and we also included the, um, all the, all the data collected from the budget surveys from 2022 and 2023. So, some of the highlights, recurring themes from the engagement, we heard a lot of requests for lighting in both streets and public spaces, a lot related to pedestrian safety, i.e. crosswalks, a lot on youth programming and services, youth engagement overall, uh, more police and fire services and programs for the community, in general, more community engagement, communication, collaboration, uh, more capacity building and trainings, and mental health support, and the need for a mobile crisis unit. So, with all that engagement, both internal and external, uh, that resulted in three major goals, so the, the items listed under each of these goals are examples, and not the full list of what is covered in each of the goals, so just a minute, just a quick note on that. So, the first goal is to continue to play a central role in the creation and maintenance of a community that resolves its problems in non-violent ways, so that would be policies connected to improving community safety through civic engagement and relationship building, and also police response alternatives. Uh, goal number two would be to provide effective and responsive police and fire services to ensure a safe and vibrant community, so this again is, are our policies connected to ensuring residents have effective and responsive, uh, emergency services, and, and improving facility, facilities and access to equipment and technology, and also community education. The third goal, uh, is to create a safer community through the use of design techniques for existing spaces, new developments and reuse and revitalization projects, so this would be policies connected to the promotion of crime prevention through environmental design techniques and strategies, and also maintenance and upkeep of our neighborhoods. So, that's each, uh, public safety, sorry. So, now on to my favorite topic, health and environmental justice, again, this element is the first of its kind, and because of that, it was important for us to give it special attention, and also because of Senate Bill 1000, it is state law, although I must say, even if it wasn't a requirement, I think, uh, we would have included it anyways, and in a way, we have already done a little bit of the EJ element, and I'll expand on this a little bit later, uh, but just to give a little bit more context, context, historically throughout Salinas, low-income residents, communities of color, indigenous people, and immigrant communities have disproportionately suffered the greatest environmental burdens, issues related to pesticide exposure, contributing to air pollution and poor water quality, lack of access to green space and fresh food, limited access to healthcare, overcrowded housing, and poorly maintained housing stock have resulted in long-term health effects and a substandard quality of life for many Salinas residents. This health and EJ element seeks to alleviate those realities by placing its focus on people, how they are connected and affected by environmental hazards, and how those issues could be minimized and mitigated regardless of race, ethnicity, or income level. That felt good to say. The policy objectives required by SB 1000 are to protect public health, cover areas of concern for the community, for example, housing needs, to promote community ownership, to demonstrate compliance with state and local regulations, to reduce and prevent pollution, and to promote strong economies. Oops, sorry, I forgot to go to the next slide there. So, those are the policy objectives required by the Senate Bill. And with those policy objectives, this EJ element should address pollution, exposure, and air quality, public facilities, physical activity and food access, safe and sanitary homes, community engagement, and improvement, improvements and programs for disadvantaged communities. And as a quick, as a quick side note, um, I'm happy to say that we worked a little bit backwards with this EJ business, because if you think about it, the Alisal Vibrancy Plan is almost like an EJ element, it's like a small EJ element, and if we didn't have an Alisal Vibrancy Plan, and we did this EJ element, one of the policies to come out of it would probably say, you should do an Alisal Vibrancy Plan, so we're on the right track there. So, again, like public safety, we did quite a bit of community engagement for health and EJ, uh, we had close to 2,000 residents engaged, we had the first-ever, uh, Spanish-only workshop, and we had one in English as well, six pop-up activities, oops, sorry, six pop-up activities as well as, uh, focus groups and presentations, which included some out-of-the-box outreach strategies, uh, which you can see in these images, pop-ups out in the fields, and at La Plaza Bakery in five, at five in the morning to catch folks on their, on their way to their early shifts. So, the top three areas of concern coming out of this engagement were healthcare access, access to safe and healthy housing, and access to healthy food and grocery stores. So, some other recurring themes we heard was the need for more open public space, again, more concerns with unsafe housing, water quality, creek restoration, lack of green space, pesticide exposure, and the need for more walkable and bikeable communities. Um, as you can see on the map there, not a lot of green. Uh, Salinas currently provides 1.52 acres of developed parkland per 1,000 residents, Salinas currently provides 1.52 acres of developed parkland per 1,000 residents, which is below the national standard of three acres per 1,000 residents. And then just to continue to expand on the recurring themes, the map on the left shows the medical facilities. Hard to see the indicators there, but also not many indicators to see. The map on the right is called the Healthy Places Index. It's a project of the Public Health Alliance of Southern California, which explores community conditions that impact life expectancies. Some of the conditions would be like healthcare, housing, education, among others. So it goes from dark blue to green, the dark blue meaning less healthy to more healthy community conditions, just to highlight the need for this discussion. So coming out of all that engagement and with staff feedback and our steering committee, that resulted in seven health and EJ goals. The first one being to improve the quality of the built-in natural environments, to support healthy lifestyles, and reduce health inequities. So this is basically policies that improve the built environment. Goal number two is to provide and maintain a range of community services programs and institutional facilities to equitably meet the needs of the community. Some examples would be policies that expand access to childcare, provide resources to vulnerable populations, and strengthen the capacity of CBOs. Goal number three is to ensure Salinas residents have access to purchase grow healthy, affordable, and culturally diverse, relevant foods. So basically to reduce food insecurity, ensure safe and sanitary homes. And a lot of these policies go with some of our other chapters, like with the housing element. We explore a little bit more of this. Goal number five, to promote spaces for physical activity. Goal number six is to encourage robust civic engagement and the development of resident leaders committed to shaping the city's future. And this again is to create a welcoming environment for more community engagement. And number seven is to improve existing and create new programs that address the needs of disadvantaged communities. So again, to continue to provide services to stabilize unhoused population, to reduce disparities among different races and ethnicities, income levels, and LGBTQ+ communities. And again, the items listed are examples and do not reflect all the policies in action. So these are just some of the highlights. So we do have quite a bit of work to do, but these chapters help give us a little bit of structure and purpose, which will help us reach all our objectives. In closing, we're in the process of scheduling our Climate Action Plan webinar. We're also in the process of scheduling our general plan wrap-up, which will be a lot of the policy review in the spring. So if you're interested, and you're here, and you're hearing things, and you want to provide some feedback, you still have an opportunity to do so. We'll have more city council and planning commission study sessions. I believe economic development is next, so you have that to look forward to. And if all goes well and the planning gods are good to us, we'll have a draft plan, EIR, and climate action plan late this summer. And that's public safety and environmental justice in a nutshell, so happy to answer any questions.
For our general plan, no less.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. And great job on clearing 18 slides. I wasn't sure you could do it, but you did it beautifully. So with that, we'll go to council member questions. Councilmember McShane. Okay. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you so much for your presentation, for naming things that need to be named in spaces such as these, and for all of your work in the community, especially around community engagement. I want to make sure that as a council member, I could best support these two elements of our general plan with policies, ordinances, and essentially, for lack of a better term, give it teeth. So in your viewpoint as a planner, what kind of ordinances and policies do you think the city council should pursue to advance both of those elements?
Oh, I think there's, I'd have to really look at each policy to really explore that question. But I think there, we're already working on a lot of them now.
Yeah.
So part, I think part of the task is to go, you know, once this is adopted, to go through each of these chapters, not just with these elements, and to really look at what are the kind of areas of opportunity and what are the things that we're already working on that we could use some of this momentum to push them forward.
Thank you so much, and that was my only question.
Okay. Councilmember Sandoval? All right. We'll go over council member Gonzalez. Councilmember Barrera?
Ms. Gurmilaan, I mean, this is awesome work. You know, when I hear disadvantaged communities, I always try to share with children because a lot of times children are brought up believing, especially in the Alisal, you know, they hear so many things, negative things about their community. With these policies, and I've been to several of these meetings, and I've seen the energy and the connection with some of these folks because they want to improve their lives, their neighborhoods. With these policies, how do you see us lifting our immediate community? Do you see that the people themselves, as you engage in these policies, do you feel the empowerment where they start becoming leaders within their own neighborhoods, their own areas?
Absolutely. And going back to the Alisal vibrancy plan and referencing that process, and even now it's implementation, that we still see the fruits of that labor, right? From working with that steering committee and the working groups and having all that engagement, how we've kind of carried it through, and folks are still involved in the implementation. That's always the example I use. I always talk about the AVP and how it translates over to the budget engagement and over to action. I think it's the best way to show folks that we need to have things documented. We need to, I always call it our evidence, right? We need to have things on paper so that we can point to it. So the first step is to get it on paper, and then we can do the follow-up work, like with the AVP, to get things moving and implemented. But I, I hope that people see, especially the ones that have been involved in other planning processes, that they have, that they have a voice and that they can really influence the way the city looks and their services. So hopefully with this, with both public safety and health and environmental justice, that people see that they could continue to play a role in how we do things and that. We're not necessarily the experts all the time, that we need their input to really make the city better.
Yes. And thank you again. And just one last question on, as we're engaging and these leaders are being raised, you know, there's some people that are really engaged and wanting to get involved. Do you feel our line of communication, your department or even city staff, we have a good sense of, you know, being able to communicate? You know, when we get that phone call, we get back to them, and we build community. That's what I'm asking.
I think we've definitely improved in terms of communication. I think it's still something that, that we could continue to work on. But I think across departments, we've seen definitely more of that dialogue happening. But I know with this process, and I know LCS as well, since we work so closely with them, we are doing more things to continue to have more folks involved, right? And like, I like talking about the out-of-the-box strategies because we have to continue to do things that are, you know, that are a little bit different because maybe we're not reaching everyone with just, you know, the survey or the community meeting, and what are the other things that we can do? And that's where we also need your help. You know, if you have, you know, kind of like that La Plaza at 5:00 AM idea, if there's something else that you think would be effective, I think that's where we could really stand to use your support.
Yeah. Thank you.
La Plaza at 5:00 AM is a good suggestion. All right. Councilmember Osornio?
I'm going to reserve for comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll go out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
I like interesting.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, Mary Ann Worden again. I enjoyed the reports. Not have enough questions, meaning complaints about, except how do we get notified? I haven't been notified for a meeting from the police department, the planning department, and none of my neighbors or my friends have also not been notified. So I want to know how you notify them because of just by Facebook or our thing on our phones and stuff that I try to get on the city, forget it. It's a nightmare, and I don't get anything. And I hear the same complaints. So since California doesn't publish anything, maybe we could put some of this on the news that we're having a meeting and not wait till the last minute, you know, at 5:00 o'clock and say, hey, there's a meeting. That's not, you know, that's not, gives us enough time. But maybe putting it there, both, you know, KSBW and the other one, and maybe the Spanish program. I know we used to, with all the meetings, I was involved in, we would send notices to the schools, and the schools would put them in their packet with, at the end of the week or whatever, to send home to the parents. And that's how we got our people involved. And it was in English and in Spanish. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Hi, Tom Tessier. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can lift the microphone.
Tony said he couldn't hear me last time. Can you hear me, Tony? Anyway, in Eugene, Oregon, they have a pretty successful program. You mentioned something about sending non-police to help with certain situations. Do you know about that? That's just, that one in Eugene? I don't know, I don't remember the name of it, but it's just been quite successful. Is that something that's being considered for the year?
I can't comment right now. We just take public comments so you can address the council.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, I'm, well, that's an idea. It's working in Eugene, Oregon. You don't have to send, you know, armed police all the time. And they'd been doing it for a couple, for several years. And I'm surprised, you know, I know it's not a popular subject, and like, senior citizens is not a popular subject. There's no senior center here in this town. I was on the area agency on aging commissioner, and I was amazed, didn't realize how little there was here in Salinas until I had to take care of my mom here with dementia. Compared to where she was living before, it was like day and night. So we had a meeting with the assistant city manager, and he said that not
Thank you.
Zero dollars have been spent on
Thank you. So
Seniors.
Yes, thank you. And if you'd like to submit your comments to the city clerk, she can accept those. Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right. Seeing none, we'll come back to council members. There is no action on this. We're just providing comments. So I'll start to my left, Councilmember McShane.
No, just really encouraged by this. We've needed to engage in some of this planning, and I know the general plan has been a catch-all for some of these requests, and you're doing it. Climate Action Plan, looking at environmental justice, being out there at 5:00 in the morning, La Plaza Bakery, awesome. So just, yeah, encouraged by what I'm seeing. Thanks.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you so much for all of your work on this. And as Chair of the Housing and Land Use Committee, I think that environmental justice falls in land use. And so certainly as you come forward with specific ordinances and policies, be more than happy to work through that process with you and making sure that we can put this general plan to use for our community. Thank you.
Amazing work. This is really an example to other communities on how to get this plan going.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Monika, for the hard work. I really was encouraged in attending a few of these meetings, in particular, the public safety ones. And it was good to see not only the high turnout, but to see the sense of ownership the residents felt over the plan itself, and to just see how excited they were, that they were, you could see that they felt they were heard, they were engaged with. And in something as integral as this, that's always a plus. So thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
There's no doubt, Ms. Gurmilaan, whoever hired you did a great service to this city. I want to thank Ms. Lisa Burton. You know, this is the exciting part, to see people engaged. And you know what, and I think what I really appreciate, not only that they're getting involved, but they're being heard, and they see fruition coming out of those conversations. That's the great part. And you know, we do have a lot of great things for seniors. We have the active seniors here. It's a great center. We have the firehouse where it's happening, recreation center for, I mean, they got over 70, 100 seniors very active out there. So we have a lot of great things for our seniors. And thanks to your good work, you know, with this Vision, Alisal vibrancy plan, I think it's, Cluster Park's getting a big facelift. I mean, you have Cesar Chavez Park. We have Dia del Niño coming up this Sunday. Great things are coming out through this. And you know what's fantastic? There was a meeting last night at Cluster Park, and a lot of the people that are going there are still being involved because of these types of meetings that you put out. So you're creating leaders. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Osornio, final comments?
I too am just very happy about the different type of outreach. You know, I like the picture of seeing folks, you know, in the fields, out there, and trying to get input because a lot of folks, they work 4:00 in the morning, as you guys see, 4:00 in the morning, all the way up to 6:00, 7:00 at night sometimes. And so getting folks engaged is just, is a huge priority, and you guys are doing a great job at that. Just wanted to point out some things that obviously, as there was a CIP project last year that I don't think made the, made the final CIP, it was a, it was a lighting project of like $900,000. But I think about that because in this, in this feedback here, in the pop-up activity, there was, it was identified twice for more lighting in streets and public spaces. And then with the youth summary as well, more lighting on the streets and public spaces was also identified. So as a project like that, that didn't make the cut last year, I just, I would, I would hope that come budget time, that's something that we really prioritize, especially when that project was in the Roosevelt, the Kern, the King Streets, and Madera. But that's just something that I just wanted to point out. And then, and then lastly, also, just seeing when it comes to health and environmental justice, you know, we're talking about, it says here, reoccurring themes. It says unsafe housing, it says water quality, lack of green spaces, and pesticide exposure. So just, those are some of the things that I just wanted to highlight, that as we do look at these plans and we're getting those, those things that we're identifying, I just hope that future councils and maybe this council will really prioritize those things and take them seriously. So thank you so much for your work on this, Monika. Appreciate it.
And just comments on my end. I appreciate the expansive dialogue about sort of creating police response alternatives and whatnot. I did see that there's not a whole lot of discussion about recruitment and retention of both police and fire, and it's something that we have just systemically been dealing with for many, many years. I think in the general plan, that would be an incredibly important component of that is making sure that we, we are maintaining staffing levels. I know that there's some discussion, if I remember, in 1.1, nope, that's not right. Let's see, 2.1.1, it talks about addressing staffing needs and additional, adding additional response units during periods of high incident activity, things like that. But if we're already short-staffed, that's going to be very difficult to do, as witnessed by some of our critical incidents that have occurred over the last couple of years. So that would just be my feedback. I certainly recognize, you know, it's the will of the people and certainly the will of this council, but recruitment and retention for both public safety organizations, I think, is going to be really critical in the upcoming years. So with that, we will mark this report received. Thank you. Appreciate the
Thank you.
... robust dialogue. All right, council members, we have 20 minutes and 12 items on consent. Would any member of the public, or excuse me, would any member on council like to pull these 12 items? As a reminder, 23-239, the agreement with Kismet Security and Patrol has been continued. I'll start to my left, Councilmember McShane.
Yeah, just one, I'm sorry, city manager, I just want to make sure I have it right. It's 230 providing additional classes for finding health, keeping people, that's one. That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rocha? Councilmember Sandoval?
24. 24223.
Three. Okay. Great. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, 218 and 223.
And Councilmember Osnio?
178, 223, 238.
Okay, I'll seek a motion to approve the remaining items. Oh, sorry, thank you, public. Thank you.
233 and 236.
Any other member of the public wish to pull an item? All right, I will go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to pull an item? Okay, it looks like I have Yolanda Hayes. You can go ahead and unmute yourself. Will you let me know what item you'd like to pull?
Sorry, that was a mistake on my part.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion from the remaining items. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Osnio, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval on ID 231, 234, 146, 192, 213, 219, 237. All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. All right, we'll go on to the first item, ID 178, Amendment Number Four to the Agreement for Services for Benitez Security Services. Councilmember Osnio, you pulled this item.
If I can just get a little bit of information, this item here, I just, I, I didn't know too much about this item. I just wanted to get some clarification on what it, what it is.
Good evening, Lisa Brinton, Community Development Director. So the contract, the security contract is associated with our emergency motel program, which is at the Steinbeck Lodge on John Street. And so this is an amendment, it's a bridge. We are going to be going out through a competitive process to select a new security provider, but we need time to do that. So this is just amending that so that we can continue to provide the security needed at that site.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Osnio, seconded by Councilmember McShane. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. 218, Tony Barrera, Acceptance of Internet Crimes Against Children Grant. You pulled this item.
Yes, thank you. Well, making it a safer community for our children, I would just like the public to know, and I think this is exciting news and just so our children will be safe. Can you share a little bit about the grant? Thank you.
Thank you. The Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force is centered out of San Jose. We're part of that task force. We have been for a few years now. It's a fantastic resource for us. We've gotten a grant that afforded us the opportunity to purchase the ICAC vehicle, which I mentioned in my previous presentation. That's a mobile forensics unit that we take out in the field with us. It's actually a county resource. We assist other agencies with that as well. Basically, this is the ICAC team and this grant opportunity affords us the ability to investigate very serious crimes against children, sex crimes, internet-related crimes. So this is another opportunity for us and I appreciate you considering it.
Yes, and thank you, because you know, this is critical. I know you've made a couple of arrests of adults abusing children. It's critical. So I just want the public to know that we're trying everything possible to make it a safer community.
Absolutely.
But with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember McShane. Call for the vote on 218, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. All right, next item is 223. I'm going to go ahead and let our member of the public go first. Mary Ann Warden, you pulled this item.
Fire. I was looking at.
It's the Police and Fire
Fireworks.
Fireworks Enforcement Plan.
Well, fireworks starts, it's already started around my, my neighborhood. And in fact, it goes all year long. But it is really bad all year long over in our place. But from April on, it is ridiculous. And I don't even bother calling anymore because I know the fire department hears it and, because it's all over our area. And when you have new babies and those things are going off, or your dogs, and then the dogs start barking, it's our dog, luckily, I mean, she's passed away now, but she would come in the house, which we could never get her in the house, even in the wintertime, freezing, we'd have to drag her in. But it was horrible and it gets, but it starts really early. And I know the officers are doing what they can, but something needs to be done all year long. It's awful, especially when it comes late at night. Sometimes it goes all day, all day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval, you also pulled this item.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to reflect back on our last year's presentation, the after-report, Fireworks Enforcement. And I remember there was a discussion about possible, maybe additional support for our fire and police as far as maybe contracting somebody additional, because I know that, you know, obviously we have low staffing levels. But in the first slide, it said something along the lines of augmenting fire and police. I just wanted to know if this year we're going to have, do we have like a dedicated number of staff or our goal for staff enforcement?
I've started, so, thank you for having me, Chris Knapp, Fire Marshal. We've started conversations with our drone team, our admin staff, our line staff, Salinas Police Department, and then other jurisdictions that we're trying to reach out and get creative to get additional support, whether it's boots on the ground or additional birds in the air to try to get credible evidence so we can tie these two citations. So I don't have an exact number for you, as we're still out and it's difficult to plan around a holiday and getting exact numbers, but we're definitely chewing on that, or now versus waiting a month out and trying to get the staffing done.
I appreciate that. I know there was discussion and maybe it was just me, I don't remember if any of the council members had supported that, but, you know, either offering incentives or additional support or making sure that we do utilize all the money that we collect from fines or fireworks sale to make sure we're able to maximize it. I know you're trying, I just, every year, it's just a, it's like a war zone out there.
Correct. So all the money that we generate from Safe and Sane Sales, along with those citations, goes into the enforcement process for the next year.
Great. And how about the fines that we collect? I know they may not be substantial, but are we using all those fines also to, you know, help support enforcement?
Yes, and the collected date from last year to today is in the area of $33,000.
Okay, great. And I know that we had like a citizens or residents can report violations and they send us their video. Do we have any plans to give like a how-to for those residents to make sure whatever they're providing is adequate?
So on the Q Alert page, we just updated it probably a couple of weeks ago to try to really narrow down the information that we're getting, because we get a lot of complaints with an address, but, you know, Salinas Police or CSO or fire unit, if they were to go out there, isn't going to sit and have the time or be able to sit on that address waiting for them to shoot something off. So we really tried to refine the information that we're trying to get from the public of credible video or photos with descriptions of the individual, the address that they are either launching from or going back to after they launch in a public area. So yes, we have cleaned that information up.
Great.
And then that information will get updated on our web, or is updated on our website so that it is clear, because I understand people's frustrations. I see all the Q Alerts that do come on in. And it's, it's, it's a tough thing to enforce because it doesn't happen all the time, every single day, but it does happen and we do need that evidence to write somebody a citation.
Right, well, I'm excited about your intentional approach and looking forward to the community outreach. And thank you very much for your work.
Yep, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Sandoval, seconded by Councilmember McShane. We'll go on for other, other council members who pulled this item. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, I, I also wanted to say thank you for all the great work, because it is, it is a tough thing to enforce. But I'm going to look to the city manager and the city attorney. I think some of the things that we really need to work on is the credible evidence. We need to figure out a way, we have a small habitual lawbreakers that do this every year. Sad thing about it, people, I mean, it's Warden and, and her deceased dog and, we have veterans, we have seniors, we have a lot of people that get scared with these loud firecrackers, illegal firecrackers. And I think if we can work somehow, as difficult as it is, to get that credible evidence where we do cite somebody that we can actually get the money. Ten-four? Thank you.
Councilmember Osnio, you also pulled this item.
Yes, thank you. Just again, wanted to echo the, that getting, getting credible evidence and making sure that we're, that we're training, or not training, excuse me, educating the public on how to report. A how-to video, sounds like actually not a bad idea. I, I've been keeping up with the fire department's social media and it's, it's looking good. So I think that this would fit in right really well in, in that social media. So just again, the credible, the credible evidence and things like that, but also the prevention. So if we do have those, those folks that are, we're having to go to their house every single year, maybe we send them a letter in the mail and say, hey, we'll be here, what, you know, what time will you be outside? We'll be waiting for you or something. But, but also just, just really wanting to make sure, one of the, one of the, the comments that I heard around this, and I, I thought it was really good, is the team that goes out there on the Fourth of July, I've been part of, and I know some of my colleagues have as well, been part of kind of like the, the huddle right before the Fourth of July. And I mean, it's, it's a holiday. Folks want to be with their families. I know that there's people that volunteer on those days. I know there's code enforcement, police officers, fire, and even other departments. But what I would, what I, what I would like to see, and again, this is something that I heard, is kind of like maybe even a training for folks that are, folks that are going to be participating in that year's enforcement or drive-arounds and things like that, just to really make sure that even the folks that are driving around, they're just, they know exactly what to look for, how to do it. So that's something that I would suggest. So no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ID 236, we have Mary Ann Warden has pulled this item, City Hall's First Floor Build Back Project. Not to be confused with Joe Biden's Build Back Better Project. This is Salinas City Hall's Build Back Project.
Okay, Mary Ann Warden, again, my concern is what are we doing to that first floor? Because when we had Measure E, we worked on first floor. Measure G, we did the second floor, which was really needed, needed it, but we worked on the first floor again. So I was told all we were doing was taking the stuff off the walls that needed to be taken off and, and the roof. And it was going to be done at least, I think it was before Christmas. Now it's April and they're still working it. Now we find more stuff on the first floor. Didn't they, what happened to those contractors that worked on that those two different times? They didn't find the problems? This is questions I've been asked. So I said, okay, if I'm around them, I might ask them. So those were some of the concerns, people are wondering what happened and why didn't it get taken care of those other times? And so maybe you can answer those for them.
All right, thank you. I'll need a motion to approve this item.
Move.
I'll need, okay, motion made by Councilmember McShane, seconded by Councilmember Osnio. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I have three minutes for that hard stop. ID 238, Second Amendment to the Agreement to the Accountancy Corporation. McShane, you pulled this item.
Yeah, I just want to better understand, how many vacancies do you know you have in this department? Are we closer to the finance director?
So the finance director of recruitment has come down. I imagine we're, we're gonna, we're gonna revamp that, that recruitment effort and it will go back up. So we do have, unfortunately, we have two senior accountant recruit, I'm sorry, vacancies. And we also recently had the accounting manager out. And so that, that is why we needed to contract with an accounting firm to assist us with all of the accounting functions.
What happened to that previous firm? Like, we had another one?
We are still working with them. We do, we are working with one individual. So we were able to backfill to a certain extent that one senior accountant position.
Another role?
This is another one, yes, it's another accountant.
For, okay, any reason to be worried? We have a budget. You got Selena, no worries.
So, so thank you. At, at the moment, we, we have, we're, we are fairly confident that we are moving forward with all of our financial obligations. There were some delays in the past year and we're not back on track, but we are working to get there. And these consultants have, are pretty crucial to continuing that effort.
Okay, do you want comments now, Mayor, or after?
No, you've pulled the item, so it's your, it's, go ahead and make a comment if you need to.
Yeah, I just, thank you. I know your work is running, you can, this continues to just be an area of concern. I have a fire director in several vacant positions, one of the most important roles in the city, just concerned, and so, so, just leaving, what's leaking, you know, to just alert the public and city management, this is an important area that I'm looking at, by its record, as well.
Councilmember Osnio, you pulled this item.
No, no comments. I just wanted to pull it out for a second, separate.
Okay, I'll need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Osnio, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osnio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Any public comment on closed session items, California Government Code 54956.9E1 or Seeing none, I'll go to Zoom. Any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on closed session? So use the raise hand function. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go into closed session at 6:30 PM.
Good afternoon, good evening. Good evening, everyone. Today is April 23rd. We are reconvening from the 4:00 PM council session. We have no items to report out from closed session. And we will start with our one and only item here for the 7:30 PM consideration, which is the Salinas City Council District III vacancy. We'll receive a report from City Attorney Chris Callahan.
So thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We have a large group of people here tonight and we just want to remind folks of the rules of decorum that we have in order. We're just going to ask that everyone stay focused on the question tonight, which is a process question, and not focus on making personal comments. I think that goes for both the council members amongst each other and with the public and with the public and the council members. And so going on, we're here tonight because on April 9th, Councilmember McShane informed us that he is resigning from the council effective May 10th. The resignation takes effect without the council or Councilmember McShane having to do anything else. So under your charter, Section 2.7A, vacancies require this council to take action. There are two different options with some variations that we're going to discuss tonight. So starting with the appointment process, so under your charter, the council has a few options. You can appoint a resident of District III to fill the vacancy for the remainder of Councilmember McShane's unexpired term. That's about two and a half years, more or less. There is a residency requirement that folks who want to be appointed need to be a resident of District III for at least 28 days prior to that filing deadline. You can appoint a resident of District III to fill the vacancy through the election of a successor at the November 5th general election. So those are your two appointment options. The appointment process would require that this council have an application and an interview process that be held at an open and public hearing, so that the public can participate and view that process. So continuing with the appointments, if you do choose to appoint someone to District III through either of those two options, council, we have a proposed timeline for you. Applications would be released tomorrow. The deadline for submission to the city clerk would be May 10th. The city council will have a public hearing with the interviews and a possible appointment on May 21st. And that appointee's first meeting following their oath of office would be June 11th of this year. The other general option that you have, council, is to call an election. You can choose not to fill the vacant seat by appointment. That seat can remain vacant through the November election, if that's what you choose, or through a special election, which can be held not earlier than September 1st of this year. You can consolidate that special election with your general election, which would be on November 5th. So there would not need necessarily to be a special election if you choose not to appoint and leave that seat vacant. It could stay vacant until the November 5th election. District III would just be among those other seats that are up for election in November. So here, it's consistent with your effective and culturally responsive government strategic plan initiative. So fiscal impact, this is something that's important and we want to spend a couple of seconds talking about this. So if you appoint someone for the remainder of Councilmember McShane's term, there's no cost to the city, there's no impact on the general fund. If you choose to leave that seat vacant or appoint someone to serve through November 5th and have that seat up at the consolidated election, the cost is around $101,000 to $145,000. And these are estimates that we got from the registrar of voters. And then a special election, a standalone election that would be held no earlier than September 1st, would be about $232,000 to $349,000. So there is a significant difference in cost between a consolidated general election and a special standalone election. So tonight, our ask and our recommendation to you is to provide direction to your city manager, to me, and to your city clerk as to how you want to proceed with respect to the soon-to-be vacant District III council seat. We're available for questions, council.
Okay, and so just as a, I don't know, a small advertisement, we have these meetings every two weeks on Tuesdays. We'd love to see you guys. Just for the order of operations, how we normally operate with an item on the agenda, the staff gives the report, council members ask questions, then we'll go out to the public. I have time for public comment set at a minute and 30 seconds. So each person, every person who wishes to speak will be heard tonight. It'll be a minute and 30 seconds for each person. Then we'll come back to council for final comments and direction to staff. So there are the order of operations. We'll go to council member questions. I'll start to my right, Councilmember McShane.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you to the public. Wow, there's quite a crowd here today. Obviously, there's a lot of interest in this and based on the public comment that I've received, it seems there's a overwhelming support for what I would call a fourth option that doesn't seem to be in the staff report. So I just want to clarify, is there the option to forego an appointment and allow the election to take place in November?
Yeah, as I mentioned in discussion during the PowerPoint, this council could choose to leave that seat vacant.
Until November?
Until November.
Okay, because that wasn't reflected in the staff report, or maybe I'm just?
Yeah, no, I believe it was.
Maybe I'm not catching it, okay. To that tune, and maybe this question's more for Jim, because I wasn't as deeply involved at the mayor's level. When Mayor Gunter passed, you, Councilmember Cromini stepped in and she was mayor and effectively also representing a council seat. Can you, not to put you on the spot, but can you recount, how did that go? You know, did it work? Because there's constituent calls and emails that come in. How was she supported in that role? How did that work?
So just briefly, when Mayor Joe Gunter passed, we always have a mayor pro tem up on the dais and scheduled throughout the year in the mayor's absence. And so we use the mayor pro tem to carry on. You ask a very good question, because I'd have to look at the attorney to say, do we have the process that was written by our forefathers in terms of the charter that says what we are attempting to examine tonight, a council member vacancy, the same for a mayor? And I don't believe that's part of the charter. Chris?
So if your question, Jim, is whether or not the council has the option to leave the seat vacant, I believe they do. Because the council has the option to either make an appointment or immediately cause an election to be held to fill the vacancies. So if they choose not to make an appointment, then the only option is to have an election.
And that's for mayor or for a council seat?
That's for both, yes.
Okay.
And when you say have an election, that would be a special election or a November election?
That's correct, because you have the option of consolidating the special election with the November consolidated election.
Okay, and I think one of the things that's come up is, you know, the constituent calls for service, District III is engaged, there's no doubt about it. You know, is the mayor in a position to handle that? I mean, you know, and again, I can't speak to your staff bandwidth, Jim, because there's only so much admin support. You know, I don't know, like?
So I, just, we are prepared to answer all of your inquiries. How many of you Salinas Connect? I hope a lot of folks have to enter that. Staff sees that, administration sees that. So we stand ready to assist regardless of your decision tonight, council.
Not to put the mayor on the spot, are you ready to assist? I mean, not that you?
Yeah, I mean, I'd do it for any district, right? That's what, mayor is the mayor for the whole city. And if there needs to be, if there needs to be, you know, somebody to respond to, yeah, of course.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Rocha, question?
Thank you, Mayor. My question's for the city attorney. If the council were to choose to do a special election, that would not be in consolidation with the November election, how much, or first, what would be the date for that special election?
I may defer to the city clerk, but it would occur no earlier than September 1st. And so it would be sometime during September or sometime during October, correct?
That's correct. We wouldn't be able to call an election prior to that. And part of what would go into play here is we would have to develop the election calendar. So it would include a nomination process as well, similar to our normal election process. So we would have to get back, I would have to get back to you with a specific date on when that special election would take place. But more than likely, we're looking at probably late September, early October.
Thank you. The other question I had is, I can think of only one other vacancy the city has had that was not a result of someone's passing while in office, and that was, I believe, Ernesto Gonzalez in the 90s. How did the council at the time proceed at addressing that?
So Jim can help me fill in the blanks, but the council chose to make an appointment. They had an interview process, they issued applications, and there were two folks who competed for that spot at the time. The council had a public hearing, interviewed those folks, and made an appointment of one of those two applicants. Jim, did I miss anything?
No, it was in 2002, not in the 90s.
Thank you. And if we were to hold a special election, those funds would be general fund funds, right?
That's correct.
And I guess my question would be to the city manager, as we're looking at a $20 million budget deficit and you're working to have our city meet balanced budget, do you think there is space for several hundred thousands of dollars worth of an unexpected cost? How would we navigate that? Where would the money come from?
So we would find the money, but to your direct question, in the power, in Chris's, in the city attorney's PowerPoint tonight, the two maximum mans were 145 or 349, double. And then you heard the city clerk talk about the earliest would be September versus November 5. So we would find the money, and if I can opine a little bit, however, I'm not so sure that's money well spent for the time difference.
And that concludes my questions, thank you very much.
Councilmember Sandoval, questions?
Thank you. I know that there's vacancies, you know, maybe across Monterey County. Is there any other cities who are either facing the same thing or recently have faced the same issue? And how do they handle it?
So I don't have all those details, but I think that the plan tonight, Chris, as you and I are tag teaming, but it's happened in Solidad, in South County, it's happened in Marina, and in both cases, they made appointments, to my knowledge.
And I read a lot of District III email residents, emails as well as phone calls. And one of their concerns was that a appointment may be made that is politically beneficial to a particular person. Is there any provisions or any direction we could provide to possibly mitigate that as far as maybe people who appoint should necessarily be running for the November election? So we could address those concerns or?
So I think your question is whether or not there can be a limitation on folks applying for the vacant position if they're also going to run for the seat in November.
Correct.
Okay, so the city couldn't put that limitation in? It could be perhaps a question that you ask during the interview process, during the appointment public hearing, but you couldn't make that a condition upon someone being appointed, in my opinion.
Okay, those are all my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez, questions?
Just for my own clarification, then, if the council were to decide on a special election which would take place, you know, late September, early October, then until then, that seat would remain vacant?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all the questions for me.
Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can somebody put the slide that, or talk to what the options are, please? Mr. Pia, I know that within the next six months, we have some critical issues coming before this board affecting the entire city. And reading what several of the folks in front of us have no appointment, we're going to be talking about cannabis dispensary in South Salinas, we're going to be talking about other critical issues coming before this council. How would that impact if we do exactly what they're telling us to do, not to appoint anybody, just to keep that seat open, or empty, should I say? Advantages versus disadvantages?
So you bring up a concern that's representation versus no representation or no appointment for the five or six months. And I submit that you brought up a couple that could be of concern to many of the people in this room, whether it is cannabis, whether it is rent stabilization, whether it's Measure G, whether it's a lot of important issues that not only your current incumbent has dealt with, but this entire body has dealt with. So it would be of concern that suddenly you have no representation, but I understand the no appointment versus the no representation, but that would be of concern.
Mr. Pia, with that said, if this council chose to make an appointment, is it possible for the people in front of us from District III, could they be part of this process on the appointment?
So I, so let me just say this, I'm sorry.
You have to ask for a maintained accord, so I'd ask you to keep some background.
Understood, thank you.
Ask for what?
I would just ask the general public to refrain from commentary we're trying to get through, so that you have the opportunity to speak publicly. Thank you.
So?
You want to answer?
Tony, you want to?
It doesn't bother me what they say. I'm trying to find solutions here.
Correct.
So my question, did you understand my question?
If you can repeat, I want everyone to hear.
Yes, my question is, if this council chooses to appoint someone, because there are people in District III that are interested in the appointment, if that does happen, can the people in District III, can they be part of the appointment process?
I would certainly hope so. In the packet, as the city attorney told you, there was a packet, an application form, if that's the way you choose. And if you have friends sitting to your right or to your left, and you want to run for office and you want supporters, that the folks in this room, yes, would support and have a voice on that evening of May 21.
I may add, it will be a public hearing, right? So the selection would be made by the city council, but certainly anyone who comes would have the opportunity to make a public comment in favor or against any one of the applicants that you're interviewing. So they would be fully engaged in the process while it would be your decision.
Yes, thank you. And you know, with that said, I'm wondering if that seat does stay empty for the next six months, how would we, I know Mr. Pia said that we would figure out ways of representation, but I do know that District III is very active when they do call, you know, they're a very concerned district. How would we give them the representation that they deserve? Or is it possible?
Well, I heard, Councilmember McShane did talk about representation in terms of reporting things, getting things done, a very active group, and I certainly appreciate that. The nuance, though, that was asked by you earlier in your question is, would that come with representation on this dais for issues of the council? And it does not. It only comes, and I am confident, the mayor has semi-volunteered, but all of the administration staff, whether it's Salinas Connect, we may not always answer and fix your pothole, but we would address you in a way that I hope is respectful and to answer or schedule some results from that connection with them.
Yeah. I just have one last question, because I know, just having six voters here up here in the dais, I mean, when it comes to these critical issues hypothetically here, what would happen if we were to come to a 3-3 vote? How does that work? What happens there?
Yeah, so a 3-3 vote on an item would mean that the action doesn't move forward, the item fails, right? So you could end up with a tie and no action on that particular item.
Yeah. And one of the things of concern that I have representing the entire city is Mr. Pia and Mr. Callahan is, because like you say, we have critical issues, we got Measure G in front of us, we have other critical issues that are coming before this body that we need to take care of. So I hope, I'm going to listen to the folks in front of us and maybe we can come up with a solution tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Osornio, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the only question that I have left is going to be Steve McShane's appointment. So I believe that there's a couple of regional boards that Steve is on, there's also a couple of committees. I don't know the number, I don't know if maybe the city clerk knows the number or?
Two.
Two.
And there are alternates appointed to those as well, so the alternates would fill in.
You're ready, Anthony. Anthony's got another one. Sounds good. Yeah, that's my only question. Thank you.
I just have a question about special election. I've had a lot of people ask, what does that look like? Does that mean as a District III resident, I have to go and vote in an election where the District III city council member is the only thing you're voting on? So I would assume voter turnout might not be good because it's a special election?
Judging by the crowd, I think your turnout may be very?
Right, sorry. Poor choice of words, I apologize. And so with an election that comes in November of 2020? And so, with, with an election that comes in November of 2024, we are also, as a city, putting on a ballot, District 1, which is up for reelection, District 4, which is up for reelection, District 6, which is up for reelection, the mayor's seat, which is also up for reelection, and we would be adding District 3 to that.
That is correct.
So, you would get your normal November ballot that has president, vice president, senate, assembly, and then folks that live in District 3 would have a District 3 council member seat that they would vote for.
That's correct, ma'am.
If it goes to a November election. Okay. Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, that is to the tune of 100,000 to 145,000 if we add it to that November election.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Those are all my questions. Yes?
Just for clarification, if there was a election that was done in November of this year, would the person elected only be elected for a two-year term?
That's correct. They would serve out the remaining portion of Councilmember McShane's term.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Those are all the questions I have. And now, the show is all about the public. So, we are opening public comment. We're also taking public comment on Zoom, so just so you know, but we will be here for as long as everyone is heard. And we also have Spanish translation as well. So, with that, if you wouldn't mind, yep, get in line, and we'll give each person a minute and 30. Welcome.
Okay. My name is Bill Freeman. First of all, I'd like to thank Steve McShane for his service to our, my hometown of Salinas of District 3 for the last 14 years. I'm sure you have qualified candidates that want to be appointed tonight to this District Number 3. However, note, this is election year, and I believe the voters in District 3 should have a special election before November to decide who succeeds Steve McShane as a council person for District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, thank you all for being here. Wow. You all are terrific up here. You all care about Salinas. You care about all of us behind me. $350,000 for four months. I certainly like to see what I saw up there, which I knew was there, was that people who are interested in filling the open position in May, put an application into the city, have you folks look at the application, we are then invited back to peruse everything, learn about each individual who's interested in the vacant seat. You make the determination, fill that vacancy, because it's only for a few months. It's only six months. In the whole scheme of things, to get things accomplished in any city, six months is a tiny drop in the bucket of getting anything done. It took me 22 months to get the third parking spot approved from the city, almost two years. So, although six months sounds like it's a lot, it's not. I understand what the gentleman said there, but it's small. You're always going to have such important things going on. $350,000. If you divide the city, north, south, east, west, that's $87,500. That fills a lot of potholes. That puts a lot of, lot of good pavements on the road. It helps everybody. And if it's, if a spot is vacant, the city's going to help everybody. You're for everybody. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joey Martinez, and I'm appalled that we're here sitting discussing of how our council actually taking the voice away from a district. I don't understand that. As a Marine Corps veteran, veterans like myself fought for the right of these people out here to have a voice, and I feel like it's kind of being taken away. Think about this, guys. In your district, if this was to happen to you, how would you feel? How would your constituents feel? Think about that. Before you make that decision, think about that. Remember, this nation was built on other people, by the people, for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, I'm going to mention this, I mentioned it at 4 o'clock. I'm going to make the request, no clapping, cheering, jeering, throwing tomatoes. It's a business meeting, just like anything else, we want to maintain decorum, and I also want to make sure that everyone feels empowered to speak. So, with that, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamila Sala, I am a resident of South Salinas and a registered voter, and I want to thank Mr. McShane for his service to our community. And while agendas may not have always been 100% in agreement, I do believe he served well the residents and members of our community. So, thank you. I am encouraging you to hear my voice and the voice of many others in this room who are in opposition of an appointment, and that the imminent vacancy be allowed the time needed to find qualified candidates that will be open-minded, forward-thinking, and will represent the best interests of the communities they will serve and that we all choose to live in. As a District 3 resident, I want to exercise my right to vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Craig, councilmembers, leadership of Salinas. My name is Ginger Pierce, and I'm a 27-year proud, supportive, and involved resident of District 3. I speak today with federal, state, county, and local professional experience regarding what I believe is the best plan. First, let me say, this is a time where the power of the pause is critical. I request the following: keep the seat open until November, be fiscally responsible, be transparent, be inclusive, be democratic, and empower and support the local voice here tonight to lead the discussion in their local community. And thank you, Steve McShane.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Adam Pentetits. I mentioned earlier tonight that Steve McShane set a high bar for public service, and I want to tell a very quick story about that. When I was a resident of District 3, Steve came and knocked on my door and asked what was important to me, and we sat there and talked for 20 minutes. I have not lived in any other city, in any other council district, where any council member has ever done that, came to my front door and talked to me. In the years since that meeting with Steve McShane at my front door, I attended multiple meetings that Steve McShane facilitated for his community. It felt like almost every week sometimes that Steve McShane is hosting a meeting. And I would suggest to you here that the turnout you have here tonight is because the residents of Districts 3 will settle for nothing less. In closing, I respectfully but bluntly ask, does anyone on this dais, besides Mr. McShane, live in District 3? Given that, I'm quite certain the answer is no, would your voting for District 3 representation actually be representing District 3? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. So, my name is Frank Savino. I'm a 20-year business owner in District 3. I have lived in District 3 now for eight months and was hoping to get to vote, but maybe I will. I wanted to ask a question about the appointee and how the criteria will be set for that person. Is that in the packet, or how are we going to know?
We'll accept public comment, and then as council asks, or as council gives final comment, we'll address.
And I also wanted to thank the council and the mayor and the city for supporting our farmer's market on Main Street. It's been doing amazing, and we're just raising so much money.
I'm going to ask that we keep it on task.
I'm done.
I'm just, I'm redirecting. I got nothing but love for you, Mr. Savino. Thank you. You can't talk about the farmer's market either, Joel. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Craig, members of the city council, Joel Panzer, resident of District 3. I appreciate Mr. Pia and Mr. Callahan framing the conversation and responding to comments from council members. Based on what I've heard, I support holding the position open until a November election. Mrs. Pierce had talked about transparency, and I think that's critical for this council. There's rumors on the street that the fix is in, and there's kind of a deal being made. I just don't think you want that cloud hanging over you. So, I would appreciate it if the council would thoughtfully consider allowing this to go on, because all these other positions will be on the ballot as well, and it's just to fill the remainder of the term. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Karen Cameron, resident of Salinas, District 3 homeowner, and daughter of Marla's mayor. And I think she'd want a voice in this. And I'd like to say first, one reason I have not been here to city council meetings, because I would have been as faithful as her, you schedule them during the time that I teach after school. It makes it very inconvenient for the citizens to be able to participate in their civic government when it's at a timeframe when they're either working or in school. So, I suggest that you change the time of your meeting if you want it to have this kind of a public outcry. I support no appointment. I'm curious about the two options. Initially, I came in here thinking only the special election would benefit the district members because there are so many critical issues, particularly Measure G, that are going to affect the impact of the economics of our city. I strongly urge that you give us a voice. As they said earlier, this is a government founded on, by the people, for the people. You know, we need to be involved in this. It needs to be our choice, our voice, a District 3 resident who can truly represent us. So, if you do choose to go to the appointment process, we will all be actively involved in that process and give you our voice, and we'll be very upset if you do not take our voice seriously. So, please, this is a very important choice that you're making that is directly impacting a significant segment of our city. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Ren Bradley. I live over in 12 O'Forla, Canada Way, and I've been in Salinas for over 50 years. Okay, I've lived in different districts, but now I'm in District 3. I came to say no to the election, or to the appointment, and now I'm not quite sure. I'm a little bit on the fence, so I just want to put that out there. I do think the idea of having a temporary appointment for that short time, in my opinion, if there were, if that is how you end up voting, which I don't think you will, but it would have to be for me, someone who is not going to run in the November election, because I don't think that would be a fair process for someone to have that kind of background. I am worried, though, that even if we keep the seat vacant until November, I heard Mr. Barrera say that there are some important things on the agenda that will affect District 3. And, and I mean, absolutely no disrespect to you, Tony, because I think you're a fantastic council member, it sounded to me like it might be a threat, like maybe you will take action against District 3 because we might not have a seat on the council. And if that were the case, I would say, don't put something on the agenda that you know is going to negatively or positively affect the District 3 members until we get that seat filled in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I got an email today telling me to tell the council to appoint a certain person as an interim appointment. No, you are all duly elected, and we in District 3 have the right to elect our public official. Seven months, it's only seven months, and it's only two months from a special election to the general election. Doesn't cost you anymore? There's already an election? Give the people their voice. You're always telling people to get out there and vote. Don't take it away. Get out there and vote in November and put this on the November agenda.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Lori Gerletti, and I live in District 3 as well. For the past week or so, I've been receiving text messages and also the flyer regarding the empty city council seat created by the resignation of Steve McShane. The messages all have indicated that the position should not be filled until an election can be held. However, I believe that it would be doing the residents of District 3 a disservice and that we need representation in the city council immediately and until the next election. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Here I am again, Marcia Peoples. And Steve, I just want to say, it was a pleasure serving on your campaign committees over the years, even though I did put one of my signs in the wrong spot, but I thank you for that. I just want to say, I don't think it would be fair to appoint someone. How do we all know that you're not meeting together and choosing your favorite person? But I do believe that someone, we have, should have the right to vote on individuals of our own merit in November. I'm not here to scold the council, but I just think that the people should have a voice. And I thank you, Steve, that you went out of your way into the churches, into the community, and you met with people of diversity, and I feel that we should have diversity by virtue of letting people vote. We need more diversity in our communities. Our children have no one, people of color, that they can look up to on the council or in our community or in our schools right now. And I taught preschool at Hartnell College, like I said earlier, for 12 years. I was the only black, and I think I've been the only black since then. And so, I'm just advocating that we vote as a people. I've been in District 3 over 20 years, and Salinas almost 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, good evening. And I would like to just say, you know, I don't agree with Steve on everything, but arguably, one of the greatest leaders of our community of all time. Like the older lady said earlier, it doesn't matter what side of town, if there's an event, if there's something that has to do with the constituents, whether it's his district or not, he's there. And I don't think he's ever not answered the phone or a text message or anything, so thank you, Steve. And, you know, we're sitting here talking about money, and there's all these pitches, like, oh, it's going to be 150, it's 350 this or that. Our budget's like $250 million, or $230 million. What is 150 grand? Okay, so, you're putting a cost on our republic and our foundation as a nation and a people and a culture, and you're labeling it, you're quantifying it to $150,000? Are you people out of your mind? What kind of people are you? Are you American? Because this is a republic, and we vote, and it's a lame duck. Counsel, his vote don't matter. You all vote the same. Filet Brownout, I don't know, but you all vote the same, got the same memo. Okay? So, I mean, it's pretty ridiculous to, you know, think of anything other than election in November, as that's the only option. And I'm going to make a $1,000 bet benefiting Dorothy's place, that you use your communist ways and you vote to a point. $1,000 at Dorothy's kitchen because you're going to vote that way.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. And thank you, Mr. McShane, for your years of service. David Mack, District 3 resident, very active. Many of you know me from the past dating back probably over a decade. I would humbly request that you guys do not make an appointment. As many speakers have said, our constitution is based on representation, the right to vote. As a land use consultant who deals with the city, six months is a snap of a fingers. It just took me four and a half months to get a contract executed with the city. I am, I will wait six months to have my say in who should represent my district. As Mr. Lipe said, $150,000 may not be an insignificant amount of money, but for all of the money that this council and this city spends, $150,000 is money well spent, in my opinion, to give this many people the right to elect the person who will sit on this council and be on their behalf. I believe that Mayor Craig can answer all of my service requests, as well as Salinas Connect, or that any of you would do what is the best for the city during those. Again, please do not make an appointment. And then one last comment, there is a rumor that there is a particular person who is in line for this. I would like to believe Mr. Sandoval, Mr. Barrera, and that that particular person who I will not mention, unfortunately, trust on this council does not exist, and I do not trust that those conversations did not happen.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, David Masonev, District 3. First, I wanted to mention something about Councilman Barrera's concern of the new person not being up to speed, essentially, right? And you're going to have an election where five people of the council are going to be reelected, or you're going to have new people. So, that's really not an issue. I just wanted to say that. But I'm totally in favor of waiting. I don't have any ill regard towards anybody on the council, because I don't know you people well enough. So, I'm just, I'm just, I like to look at the glass half-full. So, I'm going to assume that everybody's on the up and up, and that the city will run the way it's supposed to. the way it's supposed to and intended to, and when the election comes, new person will be voted in, and we'll react to status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. My name is Rose Clark, and I have been a resident of District Three for over 55 years. I'm here to advocate for my rights and the rights of those residents who could not be here today. I'm here to tell you that as a resident, I'm totally against you appointing someone to represent me in my district. The reason, very simple. Why in the world would I trust some of you who were one of the reasons why Mr. McShane resigned to appoint someone of your choice for more of the same outcomes? Our neighborhoods deserve the type of leadership we were used to with Steve McShane. We are here to make our voice count. Steve cared for all the districts, not just his. So I ask you to do the same. Care for what we, we want. We want to elect our next council member. We want you to give the people of our district the respect it deserves. Salinas is going through great turmoil that is heard beyond the city limits. Please, don't let your decision be another mistake for which you will be judged. Our district, our vote, our voice. Nuestro distrito, nuestro voto, nuestra voz. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Pat Willingham. I'm a minority tonight. I look at that sign, and it says, "City of Salinas." It doesn't say six districts. And I'm here because I feel like there are many, many things that are moving very quickly with this council. You all have your issues for your own particular districts. We have road money that is going to be changed around from what was recommended by your city employees who worked many hours to come up with objective information. That's going to move quickly. Rent stabilization is going to be moving very quickly. Started in March, it's going to be acted on in June. Tony is right, there are many things that this council is going to do before the November election. I think that we need to at least have someone who can represent our District Three, may lose every vote, but needs to be here. Somebody needs to represent District Three between now and the special election. I'm going to be positive and say it will be an opportunity for you to prove that you can move out of your individual districts and do something for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. I would just like to say I'm probably the elephant in the room. Yes, I ran against Steve McShane in 2022. I got 45% of the votes. And just a little bit about me, I'm a small business owner, I'm an adjunct history instructor at Hartnell, I'm a renter, I'm a homeowner, and I'm a landlord. I have seven employees, I'm an employee and a union member. I'm on various city and county boards, and I'm a community volunteer. So like I said, I did run against Steve McShane in 2022, and I did garner 3,000 votes, and I've had a lot of people calling me and asking me to run again, which I do intend to run. So when I ran for Salinas City Council, District Three, what I heard from the voters, almost 100%, is they want their streets and sidewalks fixed. And I know, I live on Riker Street, it's one of the worst streets in District Three. The voters in District Three want their voices heard, and whoever runs and wins needs to listen to the people, the residents who voted for them. It's not about me, and it's not about City Council members, it's about the residents. So I think the job of the City Council is to work for the residents and work with the mayor, council members, and the city staff. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members. My name is Deborah Narvaez, I'm a voter of District Three, along representing SEIU 521 County nonprofit and city workers here in Monterey County in Salinas, and also the Executive Vice President of the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council, which represents 84 unions and over 37,000 members across the counties of Monterey and Santa Cruz. Filling the vacancy for Councilmember McShane's seat is important in order for the work of the city to continue with an equitable voting process where all votes are equal. It is important for the residents of the district to also hear about all eligible candidates that wish to represent the residents of the district and not be rushed into this process. The Monterey Bay Central Labor Council requests the Salinas City Council vote to fill the vacancy through an appointment and not to call for a special election and that seat be filled by somebody that is not seeking to run for permanent office. We believe it would be best to have an interim appointment for continued advocacy, representation, and voice for the district between now and November 2024, and call for an election for District Three where we can vote on who will best represent us in the district this November. Giving residents the time to elect their representative is the right thing to do, and having someone appointed in the interim is going to be the best thing for District Three voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Victor Caraviz, the new political organizer for Monterey Bay Central Labor Council, and I'm here standing with my sister just to make sure and enforce that the comment that she made is being enforced. Thank you so much.
Hi, welcome.
I'm just going to start real quick just by saying, meeting Councilmember McShane, he's always been a man of his word, he's always had my back, welcomed me with open arms, we became family. And like some of the residents from District Three have mentioned, for somebody of his stature to remove himself, it is very, very heartbreaking. When things like this occur, it's very tough. I'm a father myself, and I always have a few rules where you can say what you want about me or do whatever you need to, to myself, but when you harm others that I love or in my circle, is when I put the awareness on and just wanting to say that, let us vote. You hurt somebody that's dear to me and to my family, and having said that, give us our vote, please, because what has been done to somebody who's considered maybe the Tom Brady, if his position, please, you know, we got a Hall of Famer here, so let us make that choice to bring in the next guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Some of you know me, Lupe Covarogas Martinez, and I get very emotional. I don't know why I do that, but I do, because I have a love for this city so much that even though I've been almost a lifelong resident of District Three, I have been in every one of your districts. I have volunteered in all of your districts. Tony, you know I've always been there to support you. Orlando, when you first became on City Council, I was there for you to help you out. Steve, thank you so very much for all the work you did. We didn't always agree, but you were very open-minded about what we had to say, and that's what I ask all of you, please be very open-minded of what all your residents are saying in November. Even though I'm in District Three, I work in your districts, I work in every one of your districts, and believe me, we have so many people here that also, they live in District Three, but they also work and have people that they associate with in your district. They can have a voice in your district, too. They can reach out to your residents, make sure they're giving them the right messages of who you are by letting us pick our own representative to represent us and who we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Here today upon invitation from a kind benefactor sending out mailers. I appreciate the union bug, speaking of communists. Yeah, as far as an appointment to fill the remainder, I don't believe that'd be the right thing either, but I do appreciate some of the precedence set here tonight. You know, for an item of much importance, it's kind of nice to have a definite time set where people could plan to show up. I remember so many council meetings where we just had to show up for the whole thing. Furthermore, at those meetings, I remember this room being filled, and some folks here had no issue saying no to those folks, Mayor Craig and Councilmember McShane, perhaps you remember that. And that was your right. You were elected to make that choice. So as far as the way I see tonight, you know, there are a lot of important things. There's budget, you know, there's any number of issues that are going to come up. Maybe one day we'll get to a strategic planning session for the year, I hope, before mid-year anyways. You know, but perhaps a temporary appointment would make sense, you know. Madam Mayor, you do good stuff sometimes, I will say, but no one person can do it all. And certainly, having representation for all districts is important, you know. And the reason why we're here today, and not to be harsh, you know, Steve, I got an elderly parent as well, but you're walking away. You know, you're putting us in a bind at a hard time. So I would hope for a temporary appointment in a special election in November.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening again, City Council. My name's Amy Salmina, and I am a business owner in District Three. I've lived in every single district in this city. I represent tenants and landlords and everyone from our district. So I probably just want to make a small comment that I think that we should hold off on the election, or appointing somebody, and then have our election in November for our residents and everybody in District Three to be able to vote. I think that what needs to happen is that our City Council needs to learn to work together a little bit more, right? And if there was pressing issues that should have been voted on earlier, I don't think there's anything that's that pressing that has to be done. So if there's a 3-3 vote, I'm just going to say, it's really going to suck, right? So we're really going to have to just work together, be neighborly, and treat people how we want to be treated. And let's not forget that we're all neighbors in our city, and if this were any other seat, regardless if it's Steve's, I don't live in this district, but I have my office here, and I would be saying the same exact thing. I think we would all need to have someone from that specific district to be able to represent, you know, your roads, you know, your sidewalks, you know, your constituents, you know, all the businesses, you know what needs to happen in your district. And I think that's what is speaking volumes, is that District Three knows what they need. District Note One knows what they need, District Two knows what they need, and the best people to represent that are the City Council members that actually represent that district. So thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, Peter Zalai, District Five. So we don't live in a direct democracy, we live in a representative democracy, and we elect representatives to make lots of decisions for us. And appointing vacancies is a fairly standard procedure that goes on all the time in all levels of government, happens all the time. One of the things that disturbs me is that there is, like in this particular campaign, an ugly undercurrent of rumor and charges of malfeasance and double dealing and the fixes in, and I think that that is appalling. My representative is Andrew Sandoval. I have the greatest respect for him. I don't know these other people personally, but I ascribe honorable intentions to them. I assume that they are doing the best they can under the circumstances that they find. I am thankful that they're willing to serve our community, and I ascribe the best intentions. I don't always agree with what they do and the choices they make, but I'm not going to undermine someone's character unless I have direct evidence. And so to the extent that there has been an ugly undercurrent and assumptions made about people's motives, I think it's appalling, and I think we as a city can do better.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
My name is Bradley Clinton. I'm a lifelong resident, and the answer I think would be is get the people, come to these meetings, the ones that are interested. So sending out a ballot to everybody in District Three would be properly correct, but I think if you get people interested, the news announcing there's going to be a vote, have the people come here to vote, and you have representatives who've already offered to do the job, so you know who the candidates are, and maybe have an informal meeting and let the people ask questions to the people who want to run for it until November. The seat should not remain empty. It wouldn't be fair to anybody, not to anybody in the city. So the position has to be filled, and it has to be temporary. I'd even do it temporary, and let the person who came in second to McShane have her run again, and I'd give her my vote, because she seems concerned, too. If down the road they want to vote for me, that's fine, too. But right now, some representative needs to be for District Three, from District Three. And I've been trying to get things done with the streets, no avail. I've gone to very top, and I've done something else with the mayor nose, and I'm going to be checking in on that, and I believe that things need to change for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? I'd ask that you come forward.
I'm here again.
I wasn't, I saw you coming.
I wasn't going to talk, but I've been listening. I don't know, Jim might know, Chris Rem might remember, but years ago, we had the same thing, and we had to vote on replacing a city council member. Tony, you might have remembered it. People wanted election, and some just wanted to be appointed. Well, the ones that wanted to be appointed came here, and they gave their, you know, why they wanted to be a city councilman, what their experiences were, and so everybody got to know these people that wanted to be a city councilperson. I was here, and this, I believe, was in North Salinas. I remember some of the people that had applied, they didn't get it, but finally, when they did find someone, it was someone that really did care about that district and was working for it. So, but you need to listen to these people and what they want, it's their right. And if they do, you do decide to get someone to appoint, make sure it's somebody that they really want and not just somebody that you want, because it's their district, not your district. So remember that.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the rotunda want to speak in public comment? Otherwise, I'm going to go to Zoom. All right, I'm going to go ahead, come on up, come on up.
Can I?
Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Gary Robinson. I think I know a few of you. Yeah. What is the annual budget, 250 million? Okay. I'm in agreement with the gentleman that spoke earlier, Hebbels. And I'll be quite frank, I would like to see a special election, either September or October. I realize that's an added cost, but I think in District Three, we deserve that right. I'd like to correct one councilman that kind of reminded me of what's happening in the United States Senate and Congress, House of Representatives. Collectively, we may go for a while without having a representative in District Three. It's a small period of time. Why can we not collectively work together and be so selfish within our own district? I don't expect an answer. Think about it. We all know the demographics of this area. Salinas is a great town. It's a hard-working town. Again, I thank you for the time. You know my position. Thank you.
All right, last call for public comment inside of the City Council chambers. All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment.
So remember that.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the rotunda want to speak in public comment? Otherwise, I'm going to go to Zoom. All right, I'm going to go ahead. Come on up. Come on up.
Can I?
Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Gary Robinson. I think I know a few of you. What is the annual budget? $250 million? Okay. I'm in agreement with the gentleman that spoke earlier. And I'll be quite frank, I would like to see a special election, either September, October. I realize that's an added cost, but I think in District 3, we deserve that right. I'd like to correct one councilman that kind of reminded me of what's happening in the United States Senate and Congress, House of Representatives. Collectively, we may go for a while without having a representative in District 3. It's a small period of time. Why can we not collectively work together and be so selfish within our own district? I don't expect an answer. Think about it. We all know the demographics of this area. Salinas is a great town. It's a hard-working town. Again, I thank you for the time. You know my position. Thank you.
All right, last call for public comment inside of the City Council chambers. All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. We'll go over to Zoom. We have quite a few people on Zoom. All right, we will go with Jose Guerra. You have your hand raised. You have a minute and 30 seconds.
Good evening, councilmembers. Jose Guerra here, Montebella Neighborhood Watch Community. I agree with a lot of the members there today. They should get a special election. No one should try to identify or try to manipulate, that's kind of a harsh word, I'm sorry, try to direct a direction in a unit or a district they don't live in, or they don't preside in, or they don't work in. So I believe that the people have spoken. Do a special election. And, you know, listen to them, because, you know, they pay your salaries. You're all paid employees now. You have no excuse not to do your job. Do your job, gentlemen and ladies. Do your job, please. These people out there, they're going to let you know how they feel, and whether you like it or not, you have to take it with a grain of salt, and you've got to live with it, because you are a public servant, remember that. You work for the community. Don't forget that, guys, because you get, you know, all these perks and special treatment. You're still a human being like everybody else, remember that. And respect the people that pay your salaries. Rule number one. That's all I got to say. Hey, everybody there in District 3, God bless you, the way you represented. I'm going to unite all these neighborhoods one day. We're all going to be united. We're going to have one big district where we're all going to get together, and we're going to go to City Council together, and we're going to take care of everything we're going to take care of. People are going to start doing their jobs. You're going to be held accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, we have Jacqueline Cruz, Jackie Cruz on Zoom. You have a minute and 30.
Hi, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I want to speak to you as a mother, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I was there earlier, but I've got my three little girls, and I've got to be here with them. But this was so important for me, because I really believe we're at a critical juncture in the history of Salinas, where our beautiful community is becoming more and more diverse. We are more brown people and white people and black people, all people that are beautiful, amazing, talented. We have so much richness in this city, and I really don't like the direction. I think what happened to Councilmember Steve McShane should wake us up, should really alert us to the dysfunction. It should alert us to the lack of team. It should alert us to what is happening. I commend him for resigning, because by doing that, he made a statement, a statement that needed to be made, and I appreciate that. And Steve, thank you for your service. I've worked with you for many years, and I know that the comments that were said could have been taken out of context, and I commend you also for speaking to the people and, you know, living up to that and saying, you know, if I said something, I apologize. I think that takes, it takes a great person to do that. Thank you. So I want to ask for the council to please consider giving the people of this district, which I'm a part of at this point, but I've been part of all the districts, as you know, Tony and Orlando, I've been part of your district, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sophia Cortez, you are up next. You have a minute and 30. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I just want to first say to Mr. McShane, I may not have always agreed on a lot of the things that were said. However, thank you for your service, sir. I wish you all the best, and may God bless you and your endeavors moving forward. I would also like to say that where everyone has the right to vote for the person they feel will represent them, more so in District 3, I feel no matter what the color is, I feel that district needs the right person. In regards to that, I feel that, like, a president has a vice president to fill in, although this may not be that situation. However, Mr. McShane ran against somebody, and I feel at this time that person should be considered to be appointed solely for the purpose that that individual canvassed that district. That individual did exactly what McShane did, went knocking on doors, speaking with people, and had people vote for that individual. That individual lost by only, they had 43% of the vote, so they didn't lose by a lot. And that person is very much aware of what's going on with the city. That person is very much knows a lot of the things that are taking place and what our city needs and what that district needs. So for me, it's my hopes that you all will take that into consideration, because although we might, may not get what we want, but we may get what we need. And what that district needs right now is the right person for that position.
Thank you.
So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Rosa Rios. You have a minute and 30 seconds. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Craig, for leading these meetings. And also, I wanted to say thank you to Steve McShane. He has represented his district very well, and not only his district, but he's also involved in very many of the other districts throughout the Salinas area. And I'm from District 1. I want to let District 3 know that in solidarity, I support what you're trying to do. You need to elect who you, of your choosing, and by having a November election on your district is the best thing for you to do. Since we've lost our great councilmember, Davis, we now have a new representative who really has really not represented our District 1 well at all. There hasn't been any community meetings, cleanups, or anything. Do not let someone be appointed to do that to you. I wish you luck, and I will do what I can with that thing with my power, either if it's soliciting residents in District 3 to help you with this election that will happen in November. Do not let someone else choose for your choosing. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, we have Grant Palmer on. Grant, you have a minute and 30 seconds.
Hi, my name is Grant Palmer. I am a local business owner in the 3rd District. I have urgent business before the City Council. We simply can't put the city's business on hold until November. City has a $20 million budget shortfall, and you could lose our taxpaying business in order to have a special election that the city clearly can't afford. Please do the responsible thing and look out for local businesses by appointing a replacement immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Chago. Chago, you have a minute and 30. You're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I just want to echo the previous, the previous residents' comments. The $20 million deficit should say, should speak enough volume to the situation that we're in as a community. That money that would go to a special election, I mean, we could look around, and I'm sure many District 3 residents can see how well $345,000 could go to our city repair, repairs of sidewalks, streets, and so forth. But if we're going to be spending it on this at this moment, really doesn't, what kind of message does our city want to send to the rest of the residents in Districts 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6? Thank you very much. Oh, I do have another resident right behind me. He is a Spanish speaker. I am going to pass the microphone to Victor, to Victor right here.
Buenas tardes. Estaba escuchando los comentarios que están diciendo y este parece que lo que están queriendo hacer no es muy necesario porque están haciendo este van a ser un gasto muy necesario y esperemos que se lleve mejor hasta noviembre las votaciones que se están esperando mejor y este no gastar el dinero en lo que no deben de gastarlo y se debe de gastar en lo que sea es más necesario y hay comentarios que no, no, no van con lo que están haciendo, okay?
Good afternoon. I'm hearing all the comments, and I think that we are going to incur in an unnecessary expense. I don't think it's really necessary to spend so much money when there's so many other needs. I think we should wait until November and use that money in other things that are more necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to the next public comment.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Nidia Soto. Estoy aquí escuchando todos los comentarios que se han estado dando por miembros del el Distrito 3. Y yo pienso que tener, esperar a la elección de noviembre será lo más mejor, indicando que darle la oportunidad a los miembros del distrito, a los residentes del Distrito 3, de poder elegir a quien mejor les pueda representar y evitar el costo tan alto para una elección especial, lo cual este, este dinero, estos fondos se pueden utilizar en mejorar nuestra comunidad. Gracias. Y también tengo a una líder comunitaria que es Olga Reina, y también quiere dar su comentario público.
Hello, my name is Olga Reina, and I would like to also comment that I've been hearing all the comments, and I believe that the District 3 residents need to vote, but I do not believe in the expense that it will incur, so I would like to see the election be in November. And thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, do you mind giving translation to the second?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't know it was a threefer there, so sorry about that.
I didn't know either, Your Honor. Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Nidia Soto, and I've been hearing all the comments from all the members of the District 3. And I really think that we should wait to have a reelection in November, and that way the people or the people that live in District 3 are able to choose and elect who can best represent them. It is a very high cost to be able to incur in the special election, and those funds can be used to improve the community. And I have another person that's going to do a comment after me.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll go on. We have, it looks like we have a couple more on Zoom. Ricardo, Rick Diaz, welcome.
Thank you, City Council. Earlier this year, City of Salad got to vote whether to be able to elect their own mayor. Some of you were all for that, so I urge you to do as you did before, or think of, vote as you did before. All these good people came down here to speak to the, to you councilmembers who they voted for. They are the people who you should make your decision on behalf, decisions that are and to be made in the next seven months can and will be able to be decided by remaining councilmembers. There won't be, you know, nothing missed if there's one person missing. You guys still will make vote. All you citizens, all you elected officials that gave your endorsements to some of these councilmembers that are running for reelection, consider what they vote tonight. And including my vote, tonight I counted 26 for election and 9 for appointment and 3 for undecided or not understood. That's 26 to 9. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Marika Desmond. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council, for such a robust discussion. I'm a District 3 resident. This is a conversation about District 3, but it's also a conversation about transparency and public trust and public discourse in our city. Yes, we have a deficit, even more a reason why District 3 would like to have representation as we have to decide what are the priorities for our city. We also have a 12% reserve, so the conversation is really going to come down to how do we rebuild public trust? How do we rebuild public discourse in our city and prevent something like this happening again? I want to honor Steve McShane. He would pick up the phone for anyone, anyone in any district in a city, whether he agreed with you or not. He would come and talk to you. He would take things on the chin when he was wrong, and I really hope that is a legacy that can continue as we, as we look to the next chapter of this City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have completed public comment. Good job. Okay, we're going to go on. Final comments and council direction. I'll start to my left, Councilmember McShane.
Thank you, Mayor. The darker the day, the brighter the light, as they say. Appreciate the gratitude, the passion, and folks showing up. I don't think I've ever seen this many residents of District 3. I was joking with my colleagues up here that this is like the starting lineup. I'm looking at some of you because I've seen your emails, received your calls, gotten the text messages, and it's true, while we may not have always agreed, I'd like to think, you know, hey, our city is responsive. We do the best we can with what little we've got, and generally, you know, we're there. District 3 is active. Like, I can't say that enough to my constituents. I know the city manager knows that, and oftentimes, it's jokingly the way of the data from Salinas Connect, just how involved everybody is. I think the counts were about right. The overwhelming majority from District 3, from the residents I represent, would like to wait to vote. So I've heard that. I think I've done a fairly good job to anybody here that's asked me, because I've been asked about a million times, what do you think? How are you going to vote? Who are you supporting? I've done my absolute best to say, I'm going to wait. And I think most of the councilmembers, I would hope all of them, have sat in the same position, and I would just say, the overwhelming opinion is here, and I think it's in the best interest of District 3 to wait for a vote. You know, one, one letter that came in that really caught me by gar, off guard earlier today, I'm just going to take a minute to read this, because it was very touching. "Good evening, Mayor Craig and all councilmembers. On behalf of all of the bargaining units within the city, we urge you to consider delaying the filing, filling of Steve McShane's council seat until the November election. This decision holds significant implications for the representation of governance of our community. First and foremost, delaying the appointment allows for a fair and democratic process. By waiting until the November election, the residents of Salinas will have the opportunity to voice their preference through their votes, ensuring that the individual selected truly reflects the will of the people. Additionally, filling the vacancy through appointment now could potentially disrupt the continuity of representation. With only a few months remaining until the election, any appointed individual would serve for a brief period, potentially hindering their ability to effectively represent the interests of our community. It is crucial that the person chosen to fill this position has the necessary time and mandate to address the pressing issues facing Salinas. Furthermore, delaying the appointment demonstrates a commitment to transparency and inclusivity in our city governance. Allowing the public to participate in the selection process fosters trust and confidence in the decisions made by the City Council. It ensures that diverse voices and perspectives are considered, leading to more robust and representative leadership. In conclusion, we strongly urge the Salinas City Council to prioritize the democratic process and delay filling Steve McShane's council seat until the November election. Doing so will uphold the principles of fairness, continuity, transparency, and inclusivity that are essential for effective governance in our community. Thank you for considering our request." The reason why I read this is because I can't think of a time in 20-plus years of working in the city where all nine bargaining units agreed, ever, 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 ever. And I may be wrong, but I just want to say there's unity there, and if there's, if there's another constituency outside of this room that's filled here, it's our city workforce. We are down 20%. We are suffering from a lot of vacancies. The finance director, and who knows how many additional spots there, the police chief, and a city manager, that if he's watching this, thank you for taking the job, right? Like, it's a tough time for the city. So I just have to honor the folks that work for the city, because if you've talked to any city employees, if you know any city employees, we've seen better days. So why that's here and how, we can talk about that after all of this, who knows? There may be some theories from, some theories from up here, but, but staying in the lane of what's before us, the District 3 residents have overwhelmingly spoken two to three on this. And I think it's close enough to November. I tend to agree. It's not going to be anything jaw-dropping that we address in that time. If there is the faith in this council and in our mayor... If there is the faith in this council and in our mayor to pick up the phone and vote in the interest of the entire city, boy, the pressure's on. It's also a presidential election in November. Turnout's going to be through the roof. I don't know if any of you are following the presidential politics, but I'll be voting. And that'll probably be on the minds of a lot of folks. So turnout will be probably in the 60s or even the 70s, ensuring that somebody will be there. And by my count, I'm up over 10, probably closer to 13 now, names that want to run in District 3. For over 25 years, there's only been two souls, myself and Janet Barnes. And we both had to work our tails off. District 3 is an active constituency, and tonight will go down in history because they can get even more active. So here's what I'm going to say. I will move that we do not appoint anyone from District 3 and schedule an election for November. So that's my motion.
I'll second the item.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the residents of District 3 for your engagement and for showing up to the City Council meeting. It's clear you have had a strong relationship with your council member, and you're here to make your voices heard, and I appreciate that. I do not support an appointment for the full term, and I would not support an appointment that would last until 2026. I want to make sure that the residents of District 3 have the opportunity to vote for their representative as soon as possible in a manner that is most financially responsible for the city. Financially responsible being the key word. And I say that, key term, and I say that because while the special election would be for District 3, the special election would be funded by the entire City of Salinas and all the residents of the City of Salinas. And I have had my constituents reach out to me and ask me to make the financially responsible decision as to how I use their taxpayer dollars in terms of how we address this particular I absolutely agree with Councilmember McShane that District 3 is very active, and for that reason, District 3 needs to be represented on the City Council, and we need to have all districts represented as we move forward for the next couple of months. For me, I would support an interim appointment up until the November 2022 election, and I encourage as many residents who are interested in this discussion to participate in that next step should the council move in that direction. But that is where I stand on the issue, and I certainly appreciate all of you coming here today and making your voices heard. I support the most financially responsible option that still ensures your ability to vote as soon as possible. And so with that being said, I'd make a substitute motion to proceed with an interim appointment and to schedule a special election to be in alignment with the November 2024 election. That's my substitute motion. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so for those of you watching at home, Robert's Rules of Order requires that a substitute motion be taken first in order. And then if the motion passes, that is what the motion, that is what the action will be of the council. If it fails, the original motion that Councilmember McShane made will go into a vote. So just for, not everybody comes to City Council meetings every two weeks. So substitute motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. We'll go on for final comments.
Thank you. As I read many of your emails and took many of your phone calls, I was talking to my daughter about this, and she was trying to understand what exactly is going on. And then I realized something, that, you know, we are a big city. Despite us all being neighbors, we don't know each other. And so earlier this morning, I reached out to the city clerk and city manager, and I booked the rotunda for next Tuesday, 7:00. I'd invite you to come meet with me, talk, get to know me, ask me questions, so we could start to rebuild the trust. Due to the vacancy created by the resignation of our District 3 colleague, we are faced with a decision tonight on whether to make a short-term or longer-term appointment. We'll leave it entirely up to District 3 voters through a special vote or a consolidated election this fall. I have listened to all sides of the issues, taken many phone calls. I read emails even up to this conversation as we continue to receive them. I've listened to all sides. While I'm not particularly in favor of the long-term appointment, I see no harm in the remaining council members and the mayor making a short-term appointment. In the absence of our resigning colleague, it's our duty to ensure that residents always have a voice in government. I urge interested residents, as well as their potential supporters, to embrace the short-term process so that their representation on crucial issues ahead, such as rent stabilization, Measure G, which funds numerous public safety and public works jobs, and in the discussion on cannabis, so they have representation. It's only fair that the District 3 residents be represented. Ultimately, I firmly believe that the voters should have a say in the upcoming fall election regarding who will serve out the remainder of our resigning colleague's term. However, I also believe we can proceed with both the short-term appointment followed by a fall election. I invite the residents of District 3 to step forward to serve. I strongly encourage supporters of potential appointees to present their cases to their fellow residents. I have no agenda or hidden preferences. I simply wish for someone to serve the residents of District 3 in all of Salinas. It's crucial for all of us to work towards ensuring that all residents are heard, and tonight we are called to do just that. For those who are hesitant about having representation beginning May 10 and continuing until December of this year, our charter provides those special options and processes that must be determined when a City Council member departs prematurely. We need to move forward, and I encourage you to be part of the process.
Councilmember Gonzalez, final comments.
Let me get straight to the point. I believe that an appointment here is standard practice in any kind of situation like this. It's been done before by the city. There's been precedent that's been set. It continues to be done now in neighboring cities. And any appointment that would be made would be done so in a public hearing with the opportunity for the public to give comment, just as they did tonight. I also believe that some representation is better than no representation. We cannot put things on hold for months at a time.
We could, hang on. Just, everyone, I need everyone to stay professional, please. Thank you.
Now, as I was saying, I like to believe that anyone who throws their name into the ring here is doing so in good faith because they care for District 3 and because they care for the City of Salinas. Someone who is willing to step up in a moment like this, I think is taking action. And I'd like to be hopeful about that. Even if there were to be a special election, it wouldn't be until September, leaving a vacancy for five months. And because of that, I'm going to also do and support the fiscally responsible action of appointing a short-term appointment and supporting a consolidated election in November. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera, final comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you for all being here. And Councilwoman McShane, I think you heard your legacy this evening. Congratulations. And, you know, when people trust you, you can't buy that. I mean, that's trust. All we have is our word and our service. You will dictate whether you trust us or not. You have that luxury. You know, I heard some of you say you appreciate Councilwoman McShane, but we don't agree on everything. But you're going to have the same thing tonight with this council. Some of you are going to like some of us, some of you are going to dislike us, but that's, it's public service. And, you know, I think the most important thing is we are voted in by districts to serve the entire city. And we serve.
I, Council, okay. I'm going to ask that we maintain some level of decorum, please. I know that the emotions are high. We're going to try to get through it. So I'm just asking, I know we're all passionate about the subject. I'm going to ask that we get through it. We allow Councilmember Osorio to finish his comments. Thank you.
He's vice mayor, so I'd like to be with Osorio, too, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Barrera.
You complimented me there. I think Councilwoman Osorio is a good public servant. You know, and this evening, I really appreciate the passion tonight. I really do. I've learned, I've been, I've been here serving you for quite some time, and I've never abstained from any vote because I don't think people from District 2 voted me and trusted me to abstain from critical issues. But tonight, you are going to see democracy in action.
Okay. Please. I don't want to have to close the council chambers, so just do me the favor. Let's get through it. Thank you.
If you folks are listening, that's good. But, you know, today, I think it's going to be something remarkable where this city, in disagreements, we will figure out ways how to bring solutions. And I appreciate all your comments. I really do. And let's see where these votes land. But thank you again for being here. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Osorio, final comments.
Madam Mayor, so, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that came out and came up to public comment. And I'll be brief as well. I think that's one of the good things about going last or second to last. So you, you're totally right. You guys should have an option to vote. You guys have that right to vote for your next representative. And I also, and I also believe that the process of being able to be here when somebody applies to serve in that district is also really important, and I look forward to collaborating with the community when that happens. There's been nine people that have called me that said that they're interested in running, and we started taking some meetings into the second week of May to be able to discuss about how they would like to represent District 3. So I look forward to those conversations. I just, it's an unfortunate situation that Steve McShane is stepping down, and while I would love to say that I would be able to take his phone calls, I mean, there was a couple of phone calls that I didn't get to today. So I commend the mayor. I've called her a couple of times and haven't got a call back. I know that there's, there's been some, I mean, that's, that's just the reality. I mean, I, I'm just saying the reality. There was some folks here also that called and said, hey, I called you two, two days ago. Why haven't you returned my phone call? I said, it was a weekend. Sorry, I didn't get back to you, but I'm talking to you now. It happens. But we can't live in this, this world where we think everything's going to be okay without representation from here to November. We have some really good discussions that we have with community members. There's a lot of topics that are coming up. We need to pass a budget here soon, so there needs to be representation in that seat. And I look forward to working with every single one of you to make sure you guys have the representation you guys need in District 3. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. My final comments. So I hear you and I see you, and I thank you for being here tonight. I took a ton of phone calls over the last week, a ton of emails over the last week. You know, my opinion on this stems from, one, all of you showing up here today. So I just want to say thank you. I know that everybody has thanked you, but part of public engagement and the public process is getting involved. If you want to make a difference, you need to be involved. And so I think that no appointment is what this community is asking for. No appointment and a November election.
Yes, yes. The fix is in, but yeah.
Hang on. Thank you. I do believe that an appointment would give an individual an unfair advantage going into a November election.
Yes, yes.
So, so I appreciate that. We're not in church, so you don't need to preach. So the one thing I will acknowledge, there's been some discussion about fiscal responsibility. Like, this city spends a lot of money, like, and you're right, the budget is $250 million. We paid $250,000 for our city manager to go away. I would acknowledge that $100,000 to $145,000 for a November election is money well spent to allow 35,000 voters to choose their representative up here.
Yes, yes.
Lastly, I will just take a moment to acknowledge that I think, and what I would ask this council to hear, is that the people in the audience today don't want the five of us to choose their representative, which is what an appointment would do. If you go to no appointment, you allow them the very open, fair, and transparent process to vote for their representative in November. That's what I'm gathering from the packed house today.
Correct.
So with that, those are my final comments. We will take the substitute motion, which I'm going to have the city clerk read back, which is the motion made by Councilmember Rocha and seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. For an appointment, right? Do you have it? Okay.
So that was a motion made by Councilmember Rocha for a short-term interim appointment followed by an election for the remainder of the District 3 term to be held at the 2024 general municipal election in November.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Second by Councilmember Sandoval. So with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote on the substitute motion. Councilmember Barrera?
No.
Can you, when you, when you respond, please use the microphone so I can hear you.
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
No.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
No.
Motion passes.
So there will be an appointment in a November election.
The fix was in.
Someone has to represent District 3.
So just as a point of clarification, we'll go ahead and take a quick moment. Just as a point of clarification, applications for City Council will be open and available at the city clerk's office tomorrow. May 10 is the deadline. Thank you. Appreciate all of you coming out today. Thank you. All right. We're going to continue on with the business of the day. So if you'd like to listen to Councilmember appointments, we're going to go on to that next item, or if you're done with us, you can congregate outside. All right, we're going to go on to Councilmember Reports, Appointments, and Future Agenda Items. I will start to my left, Councilmember McShane.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Boy, just want to start by acknowledging Blue Zones had a terrific, terrific meeting yesterday, well-attended. This is a concept that started in 2017. Myself, Councilwoman De La Rosa, we're on the startup team. Eight national inspectors were here to look at how we're doing. And to sum it up, Blue Zones has grown into a county-wide initiative. We're the model. It's just impressive. You know, just want to echo what Mr. Bradley Clinton said at the beginning when it comes to roads. You know, I'm often reminded by Public Works that there's roads in South Salinas that are 125 or more years old. So they're very old, they're very heavily traveled, certainly as we look to 5,000 trucks coming through South Salinas at any given summer day. So just want to continue to emphasize an importance on our roads, certainly as it comes to the budget season. Want to just point out to Chief Murray, I've been hearing great things about how active you've been in the community. You took a breakfast with a bunch of folks and you had the Tom Brady rock star status, if I could use that. And then the, the time that you've spent at the farmer's market, recruitment, answering
and more specifically Monterey County waters. That was a good opportunity to hear from them and to share a little bit about my views on some issues. I also had a meeting with representatives of local property managers in the area to discuss the rent stabilization and tenant protection draft ordinance. Audrey Wardwell, Amy Salaminia was there. I can't remember the name of the other gentleman who joined us. Do you remember? You can't remember?
Nelson Vega.
Nelson, what was the name of Chris Nelson?
Nelson Vega.
Nelson Vega. So that was a, you know, productive meeting, got to hear that perspective as well. And I would ask our city attorney and city manager to work on scheduling those public forums sooner than later. Did you have something?
We have a schedule that we will release and produce.
Okay. Thank you very much. I want to make sure we can have those community meetings and additional meetings as needed. Always here to make myself available to anyone who wants to discuss that topic and has any concern you want to bring forward. I attended the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority Board meeting this past Thursday, and also attended the Community Human Services Board meeting, as well as the Salinas Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board meeting. So great work happening in those areas. And we're gonna have some follow-up meetings from the Salinas Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency that I'll share with this council on work that they're doing. So that's all I have to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval.
Thank you. Tomorrow morning, I have my transportation agency for Monterey County Board meeting. I also joined Councilmember Rocha at the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority meeting where we elected Liz Silva from Gonzalez as our new vice president. And I also want to thank my wife for handling all the busy kids' schedules today. And just a reminder that next Tuesday, I have reserved the rotunda and invite everyone to come and have a discussion with me, ask me some questions, and look forward to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
I wanted to follow up on a request from information as to the crosswalk on Williams and Montevilla. I mentioned at the last council meeting that I've been getting concerns from Montevilla parents, families, and administrators from both Alisal High School and Alisal Elementary. The crosswalk was painted over, and then the road itself was repaved, but students from both schools continue to use it. They're dodging cars. It's really dangerous. So I wanted to get an update on that. I wanted to thank residents that showed up this past Saturday at the trash disposal event, even in the rain. We had 207 residents who showed up, broke our record of last year. We had about 180. So many thanks to Karina, to Christina Urquides, and all city staff and community partners that were there. It was good to be there with you all. And then wanted to remind folks that Salinas, there is a City of Salinas Youth Summer Intern that is looking for applicants. The deadline is until the 30th at midnight. There are two internship opportunities, each that come with a $2,500 stipend for high school students that are juniors or seniors in the city of Salinas. And then encouraging local organizations to apply for the City of Salinas Community Sponsorship Program. And wanted to note that sponsorships are available up to 50,000 per fiscal year. So all that information is on our city website and social media, and that will be it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to say thank you to Chief Murray. You know, today we had several people that need our assistance, and the sentiment was, we just need to do our job. But I want to commend you and your department for taking care of people that are not playing by the rules. You know, I'm sure it's a competitive market, but we have to make sure that we have all of our safety permits. So thank you for your, your service out there. And I think, Mr. City Manager, people will trust our work as long as we enforce these ordinances. We have several ordinances, and I don't think people want us keep hearing that we're short-staffed, we don't have enough people. We just gotta do better with what we do have. And people expect that, and they pay for that. So, and we're a team here, regardless if we agree or disagree, we're a team here. And I think we serve this public. And today we heard a sentiment, a strong sentiment, please help us, because we're paying for all these permits, but yet there's people that are taking shortcuts and disadvantage, and they're asking us to do our job. So please, let's do it. And one of the other things, I want to thank Amy. You know, yesterday I met with about 70 people on rent stabilization at Cluster Park. These people are not charity cases. They're hard-working people, some paying $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 rents. It's incredible. But I want to thank you for your passion, that you're bringing groups together so that we can come with something that's comprehensible, because these people are desperate. And they should expect something from us, you know, some information. So I want to thank you for taking the lead on putting all these different groups together because I think it's very important. And to the city staff here, I want to, I want to thank you for your, for your hard work, because you know what? We are under a lot of strain. We got good, you know, there's a lot of great things happening here in Salinas. And even though Councilmember McShane is leaving us, I wish him the best, but this city's gonna be good because we got good people that care. And even though we're voted in by districts, we're here to serve every district, every city, the entire city. So, and to you, Madam Mayor, you did a hell of a job today. That's for you, the mayor, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I think I did a hell of a job, too, if I do say so myself. But the meeting's not over yet, so Councilmember Osorio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I have three announcements. It's gonna be for the Yo' Sell Viva Salinas. So if folks haven't already gotten their tickets, there will be an event this Friday, April 26th, starting at 5:00 PM, and it'll be at the Taylor Building. And it'll be there for cocktail hours. Dinner starts at 7:00. So if you haven't purchased your tickets, please, please do so. Also, on Saturday, April 27th, ACE will be hosting their Asian Festival that will be going on from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM in Chinatown. So if you get a chance to go out there on Saturday, it should be a great time. And then lastly, Sunday, April 28th, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Caesar Chavez Park, Dia del Niño. If folks haven't already looked into it, there'll be jump houses, face painting, there'll be balloons for the kids, raffles, giveaways, live music by arts organizations that are in the Alisal, food vendors. So if folks aren't doing anything on Sunday, you might want to check it out. So that's Dia del Niño, April 28th, 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Caesar Chavez Park. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I was half tempted to read my phone call log from Orlando Osorio here, just to maybe go through it, but we could...
Allow me to answer after your comment?
I just wanted to, you know, maybe we could regroup afterwards.
Mayor.
Okay. Couple things I want to thank and honor Bob Eggers for his time as my Measure G appointee, and I would like to make the appointment of Gloria De La Rosa to Measure G. I also wanted to just acknowledge Casp this year, or excuse me, this past week, had a presentation with Rancho Cielo Youth Campus, and they are just expanding tremendously. Ag technology, welding, they have horses, and, you know, it's just this, like, they've got a whole bunch of different programs happening these days. So it's great to get a presentation. As most of you know, I'm a co-chair with Supervisor Alejo for that, so we have different nonprofits that come in and work with youth speak every two weeks. I attended the Hitchcock Road Animals Services meeting as an alternate to Councilmember Gonzalez. Just a lot of kind of work on the Joint Powers Authority that they're, that they're trying to navigate. I did stop by and say hi to Salinas Fire Department. They had their annual planning session, so it was a good opportunity to see what they're working on long-term. I attended a Planned Parenthood luncheon over in Monterey for Planned Parenthood Marmonti. They're doing incredible work for women and children and families and people who are experiencing transition. I also attended the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards. They gave quite a few awards out to local businesses. It was a really very well-attended event. I did a Salinas High School Seniors Podcast, which was fun. So shout out to Natalie Cuevas. She called me a baddie. I had to look it up. But it was a really fun, fun hour with a couple of great girls from Salinas High. I do want to acknowledge the Monterey County Police Officers Association had their annual awards ceremony. Oscar Resendez, Officer Oscar Resendez, was awarded the Monterey County Police Officer Association for Large Agency Officer of the Year. Shane Van Der Veen was awarded Firefighter of the Year for the Monterey County Police Officer Association for a Large Agency. And then Evan Adams was the Officer of the Year for Salinas Police Department. And I believe we've acknowledged all of them here in the council chambers, but they were awarded in a big, giant room full of multiple agencies. I do want to give a shout out to Chief Murray, who very actively, with a room full of, you know, valedictorians or top students in all the departments, actively recruited from the microphone as he was announcing and saying we had a $40,000 hiring incentive and that we were the highest-paid, but did it with humor, so as not to tick off other chiefs in the audience. But I have to tell you, mad props for having a room full of 500 people and actively recruiting, because we want other Officers of the Year throughout the county to come to Salinas Police Department. So with that, I do want to take a brief moment and acknowledge we have a request from council to honor in memory, or to adjourn in memory. Councilmember Sandoval and Councilmember Barrera made this request to adjourn in memory of Sergio Alejo. And I want to give a quick moment on who Sergio Ignacio Alejo was. Sergio Ignacio Alejo, age 42, passed away peacefully surrounding, surrounded by his loving family. Sergio was born in Salinas, California on July 26th, 1981. Sergio had a passion and loyalty to his dreams, those dreams that would come true and exceed his expectations. He worked hard and was committed. He and his wife, Elvia Salgado, had a vision of opening a restaurant with the greatest food, atmosphere, and love, Stoney's Tap House and Bistro. This is and will always be his legacy. His heart was larger than life. If he could help, he would, every single time. His community was important to him, and he always made sure to bring positivity and kindness in all of his endeavors. Sergio's family was his world. He is survived by his wife, Elvia, his five children, Lydia, Danielle, Giovanni, Eliana, and Kailani, who I believe is less than a year old, his parents, Patricia and Sergio Alejo, his brothers, Oscars, David, and Hector, numerous nephews, cousins, aunts, and uncles. He was also honored most recently as a small business owner, Small Business of the Year. So just want to say he was an incredible community asset, helped out with multiple nonprofits, and succumbed to cancer last month. So with that, I just want to take a moment to give a moment of silence in memory of Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.